2006, this is Room 340 in City Hall, the great chambers of the City Council, the John Farrar Chambers. We have Councilmember Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine in the chambers who are asking all other members to join us on this wonderful day. We've got a full council chamber of some champions that are here. I'm looking forward to hear about the champions' success there and to get everybody down to start this wonderful council meeting on this day. This is a quorum call. Mr. Tate, would you take the center microphone, please, just for a moment? Mr. Tate and members of the chambers, please recognize this man for his 30th birthday today, right there. Huh? Let's take a happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Phil. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Anything you can say?
I'd like to thank my mother and father. Without them, I wouldn't be here today.
Great job, Phil. I like it. Good job. Mr. Rosendahl, may I just ask, in the interest of the United States Constitution, a fair play, does anyone else have a birthday today? Want to recognize anyone? All right, Mr. Tate, the other one did. We want an equal play for birthdays today. Very good. Call on all members. Mr. Weezer has joined us. We thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Zine. We thank you for being here. I'd like to call on Mr. Wesson right now if he would like to take the center microphone.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. It's an honor to stand before you on this great Friday to present to you some phenomenal individuals. I want to set it up by giving you a brief history. Back in 1997, Sherri Pegas and her husband had this idea of creating a girls' basketball league. They started out with about eight girls. Today, they have over 250 young ladies who participate in this basketball league, ages six to 16, I believe. But it's more than a basketball league. They give them training, college prep, they mentor, they tutor, and one of the requirements is that you must have a 3.0 average to participate. And I'm proud to say that more than 80% of the young ladies have a grade point average that's closer to 3.8 or 4.0. Other than just being smart, and they are, they know how to play basketball. So, beginning in June, June 22nd, the team that's 11-year-old and under will travel to Springfield, Missouri, where they will defend the national title that they won last year. Also, the 12-year-old team will go to Kingsport, Tennessee, where they are going to win their national title. I want to commend Sherri for doing great things, starting out with just a shoestring. I think they started out with eight girls, wound up with 40, only three coaches, but now it has grown, like I said, and it's thriving, and we need to do what we can to salute them and to praise them for the phenomenal grades that they're getting, keeps them out of jail, out of gangs, not being pregnant, teen pregnancy, so the program's phenomenal. So with this, I'd like to present to the founder of this organization a certificate from the great city of Los Angeles. Sherri, where are you?
I am right here.
And with the permission from the chair, I'd like to afford Sherri a minute or so. Speaking to the mic.
Good morning. On behalf of the GBL program and the Lady Rebels, who are the number-one team in the nation, who went to Nationals and won by an average of 25 points and got themselves inducted into the Women's Hall of Fame. Came back this year with an additional team of 12 and under young ladies who are also number-one in the state, and they will also be going to Nationals to bring home another national championship. Each of the young ladies are keeping their GPAs up to 3.5 and higher, which I think is a beautiful thing for them. We just ask for your continued support as we leave town and we go to represent this great state. We want to come home, we want to bring home something great, and we're just asking for your prayers and your support as we take 22 inner-city kids on the road to Nationals to both Springfield, Missouri, and Kingsport, Tennessee. So with your prayers and your well wishes, we're going to take these kids home and bring home another national championship.
Is that the... Can we pan over? The trophy that they won last year is bigger than meat, which is not a big accomplishment, but look at this thing. So we need you guys to go back and get another one so we'll have matching bookends. Good luck in Tennessee and good luck in Missouri. Thank you, Mr. President. Now we go follow Ms. Trudy.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation will be from a council member from the 6th District, Tony Cardenas.
Cardenas, Grohan, Weezer, Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendahl Smith, Vice Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, love members of the president, and the core, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. It's not very often, ladies and gentlemen, we get to celebrate 100 years, and today we do with... I'd like to bring up Mark Lockheim and also William Lockheim from Bobrick Washroom Equipment, Inc. Come on forward. Good to see you guys.
Thank you very much.
The city of Los Angeles has the pleasure and the honor to have these two gentlemen who run this company from the president's perspective and the chairman's perspective of a company that's been in the city of Los Angeles for 100 years. And... Thank you for that applause. It's the companies and businesses of the city of Los Angeles that keep the lights on in this city. They're the ones that pay the taxes, they're the ones that give our families in this city the opportunity to feed their families and to work every day, and that's why we want to celebrate them, because they've been dedicated to professionalism, they've been dedicated to being experts in their field. And what is their field? Every time you go into a bathroom, you should think of Bobrick, because they are the innovators that actually made the dispenser soap. They were the first one to actually put it under the sink, and where all you see is the spout. Well, that might not sound very exciting to you, but it's exciting to me because of their innovativeness, they've been able to stay in the city of Los Angeles for 100 years. And when I went to go visit them at their annual, at their 100-year celebration on-site, we did a tour of the plant, and I kept asking them questions. How do you compete? How do you continue to grow? How do you continue to have over 200 employees work for you? And they said, "Well, quite frankly, at one time, we had over 300 employees, and now we have 200 employees." But this is the best part. They said, "When we had 300 employees, we were not as ergonomically effective as we are today. When we had 300 employees, we had employees who did jobs that weren't as good for them, for their physical nature, that the jobs that we have today." They have mechanized many things, they have continued to improve and continued to invent products to keep their employees employed, to continue to compete, and I asked them the question that I would ask any manufacturing company in this country, and that is, "How you compete with China?" And they smiled and said, "We compete with China very well, because we're efficient, we're effective, we're innovative, we do not have..." How long's it been since you've had an employee file a workers' complaint?
It's been... I don't actually know. It's been a long time.
But well over a year.
It's well over a year.
See, there you go. 200 employees, manufacturing, a lot of physical workings going on, a lot of people doing physical labor in this plant, and it's been at least two, maybe three years since they had a workers' compensation claim at their work. Again, that is the kind of innovativeness that makes this country great. That's the kind of relationship that a company with 200 employees has with their employees. As I was walking through the plant, I'm talking to one of the managers, and he's excitedly telling me how the work that his employees are doing is easier on their bodies, it's better for them, and they don't have to complain about the work because they actually enjoy it. And on purpose, and from a manufacturing's vantage point, I know as an engineer that when you actually have people doing just one job and one job only, like an assembly line, that is the most efficient way to put out more product. But they don't do it that way. They actually make sure that they rotate their employees to make sure that they actually have a better experience day-to-day, so that their back doesn't hurt when they go home, so that they don't have to be laid up and hurt their bodies, like many people have to do in manufacturing jobs. I spend time explaining all that to you, because to me, it's not so much the fact that they've been here for 100 years, they've learned how to do it well, they've learned how to do it by respecting their employees, they've learned how to do it in a way that actually makes us very proud of them, of being an American company in the second-largest city in this country, Los Angeles. So with that, I'd like to invite... Who'd like to go first? Mark?
Just before that, we've got a council member who'd like to also add her good wishes, and I have a quick story to tell as well, Ms. Grohl.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Tony, acknowledging this wonderful business in your district. And colleagues, when I had the pleasure of joining Tony there at the location and seeing what they make, we did the business tax reform announcement actually there at their facility. But when you go into the washroom and wherever you may go, and you take that soap out, Bobrick is the one who created and invented where it actually comes through the granite there in many instances. They also responsible for, now have purchased, I don't know how many years ago, but koala that has, which is very near and dear to my heart, with a three-year-old, baby changing stations and everywhere. I think of them every time I use them. But most importantly, they've been a company that, as Tony mentioned, for 100 years. We just don't have many of those here in Los Angeles, and particularly even in the San Fernando Valley. And so, these individuals, I've seen both father and son twice this week at community events in this, in the San Fernando Valley, supporting organizations that are important in the city. So it's not only are they creating hundreds of jobs for us in the city, but they are good community leaders, passionate about the city, and just so pleased that you're being honored for your 100 years, and that you're part of our, I think, family here in the city, because you have made people's lives better by those jobs, by the products that you've made, and I think probably over the years, made some money for the city of Los Angeles. So, thank you very much, and congratulations, and nice to see both you, Sandy and Mark, today.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Ms. Grohl. If I may, Mr. Cardenas, just add a quick story. I want to thank you too for bringing both these gentlemen here, and my mother sang in a singing group called Collage for many years, and she actually helped write a song, the Bobrick Song, that was performed quite a few years ago. And I remember because of that, and I had a good, one of my best friends growing up, Andrew Gettleman, his father, I believe, worked there as well, and because of that, for 25 years, I've always looked at the fixtures to see whether it's Bobrick in every single bathroom I've been because of that. So, we hope that everybody listening today will also look at that and make sure that we're supporting Los Angeles every time we're there. So thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas.
Before I have these gentlemen come up and say a few words, I'd like to point out that when you have employees, they're not nameless, faceless people. When I went to visit this facility, I ran into Rigo Hernandez, who I grew up with, who's been with Bobrick for over 15 years, and then I ran into Carmen Maldonado, who's been with Bobrick for over 20 years. And that was a few years ago, and I went again, and they're still there. And these two gentlemen have been working for this company for 25 and 35 years. That's how you grow a company, by growing your people and making sure that they're happy with you, and you're happy with them, and you listen and grow together. So with that, please come forward.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas, Councilman Grohl, and really the entire City Council. I am really proud to accept this proclamation, really on behalf of all of our employees, past and present, to whom we are truly indebted. For 100 years, Bobrick and Los Angeles have supported, grown, and prospered together. It is this partnership and the mutual commitment of the company and the community which has been a key to our success. As we move towards the future, we continue our commitment to making ongoing economic contributions to both this city and region through employment opportunities, as well as with our support and involvement with the community. We appreciate your commitment and your support that allows companies such as Bobrick to prosper. Thank you very much.
These guys are shy, they don't want to take up too much time. But once again, it's really wonderful for us to remind ourselves that the city of Los Angeles is a great opportunity for people to have manufacturing here. It's not true that manufacturing is not going on in Los Angeles. When you look at the statistics, we are still one of the strongest manufacturing communities in the entire country. So Bobrick's reputation, their attitude toward their employees and their innovativeness is making sure that people understand that products that come out of this country are top-notch, that products that come out of this country are products that respect their employees, that pay them well, and also that are products that we can be proud of every time we go to the bathroom or whatever product it is. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For giving me this honor to give this resolution to Bobrick Washroom Equipment, Inc., for their 100th anniversary here in Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and congratulations. We will now give our next presentation, but before that, I want to recognize Councilmember Grohl for a couple introductions, but then we'll go to CD1 for the next presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Colleagues, today we have a special group of young people, third graders who will soon be fourth graders from Oakwood Elementary School. If we could ask them to all stand here, they're in my district, in Studio City Valley Village area. They had a chance today to meet with myself and the mayor, ask us questions, and it's an extraordinary group from Oakwood Elementary School, and some of our parents who are friends are with them today. Let's give them a great round of applause and welcome to the city. Thank you all for being here. And I'm not sure, I see Mr. Smith, because there's another group of people that's in his district, but is my alma mater, so I'll wait. You want to do the introductions, Mr. Smith?
Here comes running down the aisle.
Sorry, Mr. Garcetti, I stole a moment. I was thinking, "I'll do it," then I went, "Oh, wait, no, it's in Greg's district."
Ms. Grohl, as a former student body president and cheerleader, why don't we start off with a cheer?
I didn't realize you were a cheerleader, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I didn't know. Well, I'm certainly going to let Ms. Grohl talk a little bit about Kennedy High School as her alma mater, and I do let her come back in the district and visit the old alma mater once in a while, so. Kennedy High School is one of our great schools, and we're going to have your baseball team in next week, by the way, our city champion baseball team, once again. Kennedy High School is one of our great high schools out in the San Fernando Valley. We have today Mary Savanes and the, they call them the crew leaders of their mediation program, which helps incoming freshmen kind of acclimate themselves to the school, the policies, and helps get the graduation rates up by getting the kids involved in the school. So we have 25 students from Kennedy High School down visiting today, they're going to be working with the kids that are coming in next year, and we're glad to have you with us. Welcome, Kennedy High School. Wave, wave. You're going to be on television tonight, so wave to the cameras that are up there. Thank you, Ms. Grohl, Kennedy High School.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And believe it or not, colleagues, Kennedy High School until recently was the last high school built over 30 years ago in the city of Los Angeles under the LA Unified School District. And so, it was supposed to open in '71, but because of the North Ridge, excuse me, of the Silmarcua earthquake, it didn't open until '72. But I just wanted to say thank you, and as a graduate of Kennedy High School, I talk frequently about my wonderful experience, my teachers, my vice principal and principal who made it possible for me to be an elected official today. So, thank you to all the students who similarly are going to help other students succeed, and we look forward to having one of you come here and take my place on the City Council. Thank you very much as our president. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Reyes for a special presentation of our Los Angeles River Awards.
I'd like to invite the awardees to join me at the podium. As our recipients come to the podium, I want to take a moment, thank our mayor, Antonio Vierigosa, for his support in proclaiming today Los Angeles River Day. It's our third year. It's been an exciting involvement of events that speaks to how we can change the face of this city. This morning, we were joined by our Ad hoc River Committee, our Council President Eric Garcetti, Councilmember Tom Labange, Councilmember Jose Weezer, and our former committee member, Wendy Grohl, has been instrumental in working with us, and Jan Perry will be joining us soon. But I want to thank the community, the city family, and this year, we have individuals and entities, events, that speak to how we can change and make our backyard into our front yard. That's been our mantra, and how we change this whole environment to benefit the region. This year, we honored, for the 10th anniversary, the county master plan. Our supervisors, 10 years ago, started a heroic effort in actually developing a master plan for the region, for the whole county. Our efforts today is to complement, to leverage, to build upon their efforts, along with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. We're halfway through our master plan, we have nine meetings, we have nine more to go, but it's been their heroic effort in establishing the spine, if you will, of this endeavor. We also honor the Red Car mural, a mural that speaks to Los Angeles yesteryear, and how the rail cars actually connected all the neighborhoods in the city. Department of Water and Power, MRCA, Northeast Trees for Crystal Park, a beautiful park where you can actually see statues, you can see the eat grits, and all the different flora and fauna, wildlife that is actually in the middle of our city. The 20th anniversary of Folar, Friends of the Los Angeles River, a group of artists, poets, who were singing to the river, reciting poetry at the riverbanks, everyone thought they were crazy, but lo and behold, they build up momentum, they build up a sense of can-do, and have been able to bring a spotlight to an element that has brought us life as a city. The Public Employee Group, Oscar Amato, who drew this beautiful poster, this poster is being distributed to all our kids in our schools. They will learn of the wildlife, they'll learn of the natural beauty that this river can bring to the city. I want to thank him for his talents, and Rita Robinson for her support in the Public Works Department. The LA River City Department Task Force, a group of some might call bureaucrats, who actually have taken up the leadership role, are willing to be at the cutting edge, willing to ask, "How can we do this? Let's get to the yes." I want to thank Gary Moore for his outstanding leadership in this effort. Without him and the support of all the departments, our ability to move policy, to look at different ways, and we clean and capture, clean the riverway by capturing the contaminants before they get to the beach, to the ocean, and actually create an environment that'll be healthy for our grandchildren. And last but not least, the Tree People for Community Advocacy, in the Sun Valley area, an area that is underserved with infrastructure, they're building ways, developing ways, promoting ways, which can capture the rainwater, recycle the water, and actually create that intervention in which we can capture the contaminants as it goes through our system. So for their great efforts, and again, thanks to the mayor for proclaiming LA River Day, we will continue with the support of the federal government, the state, the county, all the congress members are behind us. Barbara Boxer announced funds that she'll be introducing and fighting for at the federal level. This will become real, folks. Don't give up on us, it's an 18-year haul, and at time of term limits, I appreciate all your support. So with that, let's give all these great people a round of applause. So with that, let's give all these great people a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Wezar to give some comments as well.
Thank you very much, and as a member of the Ad hoc River Committee, I just want to commend the awardees and for your commitment to really work on one of the most significant projects that the city of L.A. is facing. I, having grown up on the east side in Boyle Heights, we sometimes saw the riverbed there as a border between the east side and the rest of the city, but this is truly going to connect us, and it's going to make a marvelous thing for improving our environment, and also bringing us some social benefits and bringing the city a lot closer together. So I want to congratulate you, I want to congratulate the chair of this committee, who is working hard to make this happen, our council member, Ed Reyes. And finally, I want to just mention that when this is done, a few years from now, we hope that we see a lot more kids playing near the riverbeds, a lot more people coming to downtown Los Angeles. Here in my district, I know I'm very interested in seeing that, and the renaissance of downtown that's happening is a critical piece, and more people having a healthier lifestyle once this is completed as well. So thank you so much.
Mr. LaBange.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wezar, I follow you because you have some of the great bridges that cross the Los Angeles River from Boyle Heights to the central part of the city, and the great river bridges that have a beautiful mural at the Great Grand Hyperion Bridge. I think we all should thank Ed Reyes for his leadership in this project. I'm happy to be on this team. Give Ed Reyes a big hand, too. But I want to thank each and every one of you, from your different, from the Friends of the Rivers, the Los Angeles River, to our city task force, to the County of Los Angeles, please give my regards to all the county. How old is Jennifer Fang's baby now? That's what I want to know. She was just having a baby now.
Ten.
About 10 years old, so it's right in there, when she started on this. But each and every one of you made a difference, and I want to close with Scott Wilson in the back there. Give Scott a big hand there. Mr. Garcetti, you know the name Northeast Trees, it does such a good job, you know why they call it Northeast Trees? Scott Wilson told me, "Every tree northeast of Catalina Island." Anyway, good job.
Mr. Resendal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ed Reyes, you know, you sit next to me here, and some of your conscience rubs off on me every day, and I'm very, very happy to be sitting next to you and having you as my seatmate. When we all pass on to wherever, there'll be somebody always remembered for the L.A. River, and revitalizing it, and making it what it was before mankind, especially our civilization that created all these concrete barriers and turned it into a dripping stream rather than a flourishing thing, and it will be you, Ed Reyes, for your leadership, and this will be part of your legacy. Knowing that the river ends up in my area, in the wetlands, and goes in, whatever you do anywhere else with the river impacts the 11th district. But most importantly, it's great to see the animals coming back, the fish coming back, the herons coming back, and of course, the great artists who captured it all right there for all of us. Congratulations to all of you for your leadership on the L.A. River. Thank you.
In closing, I do want to acknowledge Lupe Vela and Jill Sorreal for my staff. They've been working so hard, they've been the glue that pushes all our work. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Lupe. Step up. Thank you so much. How we define our riverway will be based on how we participate in these workshops. Saturday, June 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 at the Goodwill Workforce Center, 342 North San Fernando Road, is one date in which we can have community join us. San Fernando Valley area, Tuesday, June 27th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Oakwood School, 11600 Magnolia Boulevard, North Hollywood. And the greater LA area, Wednesday, June 28th, Evergreen Rec Center, I believe that's in District 14, June 28th, 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. Hope to see you there. Help us build up this great riverway. Another round of applause for our great attendees and supporters. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Next, I'd like to recognize Council District 14 for two presentations as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I am very pleased this morning to stand here to recognize and honor two schools in the 14th Council District, Garvanzza Elementary School and Multnomah Elementary School, that have been recognized as a California Distinguished School by the California Department of Education. A wonderful accomplishment, let's give them a round of applause. As many of you know, the California Distinguished Schools Award identifies and honors some of the state's most exemplary and inspiring public schools. Although participation is voluntary, the Distinguished Schools Award is highly sought after by schools across the city and the state. These schools are selected in a rigorous process by a panel of educators who consider a range of factors, including parental involvement, which we all know is very, very important, curriculum, teacher professional development, and visionary and collaborative school leadership. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to congratulate them, I want to congratulate the students, and I want to also thank them for continuing to provide many, many youngsters an opportunity to succeed in life. So now I'd like to ask Larry Keef, the fourth grade teacher at Garvanzza, to come up to the podium, to accept a certificate from the city honoring Garvanzza Elementary School for being named one of California's distinguished schools. Congratulations.
I just want to first of all say, nine years ago, Garvanzza Elementary School appeared in the Los Angeles Times as one of the 100 worst schools in Los Angeles. We were 64th. We defined what school failure was. Supposedly, and the story may not be true, but supposedly, they gave the achievement test to a monkey who scored 70% in reading. Garvanzza scored 12% in reading. The staff, to make a long story short, said, "Enough is enough, we're going to turn this school around." And for nine straight years, our achievement scores rose. And I am thrilled to be able to be here, not as one of the 100 worst schools, but as a California Distinguished School. And in behalf of the Garvanzza School and staff, the teachers, the parents, everyone in the community, I want to thank you for this award. And I want you to know, this is absolutely gorgeous. See it back to everyone? And this will be hung right in our lobby, but more importantly, it's going to be hung in the hearts of all of our students, our teachers, our parents, and our staff. Thank you so much for this award.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Keef, and certainly that reminds us that all students, irrespective of their background, their racial origin, their income status, all these students can achieve at high levels if we give them the opportunity and resources to succeed. And certainly, it also reminds us that one of the most pressing problems this country faces is to close the achievement gap amongst groups of students, because we know that irrespective of their backgrounds, we shouldn't have these differences in scoring and achievement that we see across the country. Now, let me ask Beth Bithrow, the principal of Multnomah Elementary School, to come up to the podium to accept the certificate of recognition for being one of California's distinguished schools. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well, first of all, we want to say that everyone from Multnomah, we appreciate being appreciated, and so thank you very much. You heard from your Garvanzza teacher that it is a rigorous process, and we are very, very proud of our hard work and our accomplishments. I just wanted to let you in, when the validation team, the state validation team, they came to our school and they were leaving, this is what they said to me, and this is really what we're all about. They said, "You know, wherever we went, we saw students. We saw students who could reflect upon and share what they were learning. We saw staff members, wherever we went, they worked collaboratively and they worked effectively." And finally, they said, "We met parents, the parents felt welcome, and they love participating, and that's what Multnomah's about," so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we all know that it takes a great leader at these schools to make this possible. I've seen Ms. Bithrow at work. If you walk on her campus, you see an engagement by the community, you see parents involved, you see teachers who really care, not only about what happens in the classroom, but making sure these students are achieving holistically. So there's a real connection, and a lot of that happens because of the great leadership we've seen in Ms. Bithrow, so congratulations and thank you so much. Thank you so much, and congratulations, students. You guys are the ones who really did the work, so we're going to give you a big round of applause, because you made this happen. Congratulations.
Thank you. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, there's, my apologies. We have one more presentation from Council District 14.
Thank you again, Mr. President. It's also a pleasure today to recognize an organization who is also working on education in our communities throughout the city. It's an organization that has worked hard to create 18 charter schools here in the city of Los Angeles. They primarily work with at-risk students, who, students who sometimes need a second chance. I'm particularly impressed with the work that the Solidad Enrichment Action, or as we call it, SEA, I'm particularly impressed with the work they have done, because I, too, as a youngster, needed a second chance after I was kicked out of my middle school, and this is an organization that is dedicated and committed to make sure that all students are having an opportunity to succeed. And I'm proud to stand here today to recognize the work that this group has been doing in our community for over 30 years, and it was founded by a group of mothers in East Los Angeles who saw the gang violence surrounding their community, who saw that some of these students did not have that second chance sometimes, and so they stood up and said, "Ya basta, no mas. We got to have a place for these students to have a safer environment, and also an environment where they are learning to get that second chance." We've seen many of the graduates from SEA go on to do some wonderful things, and that's testament to the good work that SEA is doing. I'm really thrilled to be here today to recognize this group who helps this city make sure that we have a more vibrant city in educating these youth that sometimes we give up on. So please help me in welcoming the executive director of SEA to recognize the work that SEA has been doing for over 30 years, Cesar Calderon. Congratulations.
Mr. Westen would like to add his good wishes as well. Mr. Westen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members. I want to just commend this fine organization, and, Mr. Wezar, say how proud I am to have one of the schools in the district that I happen to represent, and it's my understanding that a few of the outstanding students' leadership from my district are here, and I have to say, Jennifer, Jonathan, I got a Jennifer, a Jonathan, and two Salvador's. Where are you? Raise your hands. Yeah, from my district, yeah. Anyway, congratulations very much.
Mr. Reyes?
I just want to rise and thank the leadership, thank our principal. I know they have a program in District 1 as well. And for the young folks, in this day and age, when the media has a tendency to demonize those of us who are portrayed as always going to prisons and jails, you show, and you're demonstrating how far from the truth that is. And a day and time when this state invests more in jails and prisons than in schools, you are essentially telling everyone, "You're not going to take it anymore. Through discipline, through education, and commitment, you will change the future. You are our leaders of the future." Thank you for being there, for the sacrifices, and for Jose Wezar for bringing them and letting us celebrate your accomplishments. Thank you so much.
As we continue to accomplish the dreams of the founding mothers who lost their kids to gang violence and founded SEA in 1972, on behalf of the youth we serve, their families, staff, and many agencies that work with us, I would like to thank Councilmember Jose Wezar for his leadership and commitment to education. As we have school sites in many other council districts, I would like to thank those council members for their support and help when we needed it. I have Francisco here today, who, when I asked him, "Why did you come to SEA?", he said, "I was kicked out of my home school, put on probation, sent to jail, and I had no other place to go when I left but SEA." Now he's doing very well, and he's on his way of graduating from high school. 94% of our seniors are graduating and passing the high school exit exam. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, colleagues, and again, I, you know, Cesar is, when I first met him, I saw him as a very quiet individual, but he's been doing some tremendous things throughout the state, so I want to, again, congratulate him and thank him for the work he's doing on behalf of these students. And if you think about the city of Los Angeles, the workforce we need for the future, the moral issue of making sure that our children get a good education, SEA is providing a real important thing for our city. We know that it's not these students who are failing us, it's our system who is failing these students. When we have high schools with over 5,000 students, and campuses that were built for 1,500 students, when we have a curriculum that doesn't speak to these students' interests, when we have a system in which we do not look at a student's background and individual needs, but just process them through our high schools, that is an issue, and SEA is capturing many of these students and telling them, "We have a place for you, you can succeed." And again, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you, Cesar, thank you, SEA, thank you, students, you have a bright future ahead of you, keep your heads up high, we're with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wezar.
Hey, Tom. Let me see.
He's on speaker.
Jose, let me just say, before the kids leave...
Hold up here, hold up, please.
...in behalf of the 8th and 9th District, and the students from South Los Angeles, Jefferson, and Manchester, we want to say thank you for the effort you're making, and we look forward to continue working with you on this program, so thank you very much. Ms. Perry would be here to make those comments for the 9th, but she's not here today and wanted me to make those also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Now me? All right. Okay.
Hi, how are you? Dr. Mackey, hi. Thank you, President LaBange. Oh, there's President Garcetti. Good morning, everyone. I'm very pleased today to have Dr. Mackey with us today, to honor with a beautiful resolution from the city of Los Angeles, Dr. Mackey. I'm very pleased today to have Dr. Mackey with us today to honor with a beautiful resolution from the City of Los Angeles. Dr. Marvin Mackey is a leading veterinarian in the region and is known for his work in Spain and neutering pets. And also of importance to me is Dr. Mackey and his wife, Phyllis, have lived in San Pedro for more than 35 years. That Phyllis. I know, I know. It wasn't you. I know, I didn't want to get you too mixed up. But actually, Phyllis Doherty, who's the Director of Animal Issues Movement and a former employee of Animal Services, is the one that brought to my attention all your good work for the city of Los Angeles and suggested that we honor you today, and I'm very pleased to do that. In 1974, Dr. Mackey began working for the city of L.A. when we began the first city subsidized sterilization program for pets in the country. And realizing the great need for these services, Dr. Mackey began opening spay and neuter clinics in 1976. At that time, less than 10% of dogs and less than 1% of cats were being spayed or neutered. And Dr. Mackey has been credited with bringing new and advanced techniques into pet sterilization and has trained veterinarians from all over the country in his methods. He still operates two low-cost clinics in West L.A. and Lomita. He performs spays and neuters for Harbor, our South L.A., our West L.A. city animal shelters. And he has performed more than 500,000 spays and neuters in his Lomita and West L.A. clinics and also many of our city shelters. Today, thanks to the help of Dr. Mackey, more than 2/3 of all pet dogs and 80% of pet cats are sterilized. And together, it is my hope that we can truly find a way to control our animal population in the city of Los Angeles so that we actually do get to the point of being a no-kill city. And that would be a great day for all of us. But it was with the help of people like Dr. Mackey and through education and through offering, you know, opportunities for people to have their dogs and cats spayed and neutered that this will only be possible. So we're honoring you today, Dr. Mackey, for a lifetime of service to the animals and really to the people of Los Angeles. And we thank you for all that you have done. And I want to present this certificate to you on behalf of all the members of the city of Los Angeles and thanking you for your great lifetime of service. Thank you, Dr. Mackey. And, well, wait. We'll take the picture in just a second. I want to ask Ed, you want to come up and say a few words?
Certainly. Thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the council, I've been involved in animal welfare probably 20, 25 years. And as long as I can remember, whenever the name Dr. Mackey has ever been mentioned, it's always been, always evoked a sense of reverence and respect. Every movement has always had transformational leaders, inspirational leaders, whether it be George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, Martin Luther King, Frederick Douglass, Cesar Chavez. All of these movements have had transformational leaders who have helped us change the way we think as a society and how we behave as a community. We in animal welfare have our heroes as well and our own patriarchs. And Dr. Mackey is certainly one of those. He has helped transform not just our community, but an entire nation to think in terms no longer of catch and kill, but of no kill. And while there are some so-called revolutionaries and activists who can do no more than rattle off hate-filled emails demanding changes, this giant has been leading by example for more than, for a generation, spaying and neutering hundreds of thousands of dogs and cats and probably other animals as well, as well as teaching hundreds of veterinarians across the United States to do the same thing, and as well as teaching hundreds of hard-headed animal control directors such as myself that there is a better way than catch and kill. And the benefit of Dr. Mackey's inspirational leadership in our community is that over the last several years, we have seen the numbers of animals rescued by Animal Services decline from 70,000 and 80,000 a year to 40,000. And more importantly, we've seen the number of animals killed in our shelters drop from 50,000 and 60,000 to 19,000. And dropping continually since then. And this is a story that's being played out in communities across the United States. And we in L.A., from the mayor's office to the city council to Animal Services, all of us have embraced the no-kill goal. We have Dr. Mackey's inspirational leadership to thank, who gave birth to that concept. There is a better way, and we've embraced it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Mackey, would you say a few words? And when that buzzes, just ignore it.
I knew I was receiving this award, but I didn't know I was gonna need to speak. And there's not a much, not a whole lot I need or can't add to this. Councilwoman Hahn said that I did 500,000. Let's say, my clinics and my associates and I did 500,000 maybe. I'm getting tired already.
Really?
It has been an interesting run, trying to figure out different ways of making, making a mundane type of surgery, as is viewed by my, some of my colleagues, is the same thing, same thing. And don't you get tired of doing it? And I said, "No, I, there's always something different, and it's the team, and I have something else going on all the time." I know I'm getting down on the time. One of the, one of the things I get to do in a few days is go to Australia, and I get to talk to them at their first summit on pet overpopulation in their country. So they're, they're moving in the same direction. And they're, they're asking me is just yet another laurel in my crown that I never expected and expected to get.
That's great. We're proud of you.
I really thank you an awful lot.
Thank you. And there's an alligator I'd like to talk to you about in Lake Machado. Sure hope he's not gonna have babies. Anyway, should we take a picture now? Or, because I have another presentation. We'll take a picture right now.
You have one other presentation as well?
Yeah, I have another presentation. Can I take a photo real quick?
Sure, absolutely. Give them a round of applause, please.
Right there. The other fellow.
Then we'll have one more presentation from Ms. Hahn to be followed by a presentation by Mr. Lavange.
Thank you very much. It was an honor to honor you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. For my next presentation, I would like to honor the Ebony Guild. So all of the Ebony Guild and the young women who have been participants in this, please come forward. For those of you who don't know, Ebony Guild was founded in 1981 and was organized to provide educational and recreational opportunities for the residents of the, I never can say this right, Crittenton?
Crittenton.
Crittenton Center for Young Women and Infants. The center works with abused and neglected children to prepare them for life as successful adults, with a special emphasis on the needs of teenage mothers and their infants. The founding members of the Ebony Guild felt that there was a lack of strong female African-American role models and wanted to serve as mentors, exposing young women to their true potential. For 15 years, the Ebony Guild engaged the young women of the center in activities and also raised funds for that facility. And in 1996, the Guild refocused their services and began providing services throughout Los Angeles. And in 1998, they established the Sister to Sister Program, providing support to African-American females who were upwardly bound. That year, 27 9th graders from the great King Drew Magnet High School in my district became the first group of King Drew Sisters. And these young ladies were mentored by the Ebony Guild for four years. And in 2002, the 19 girls that completed the program all enrolled in accredited higher education institutes and received a total of $90,000 in scholarships. That's worth congratulating right there. And most will be graduating from college this month. The second group of King Drew Sisters will be graduating from high school this month. And these 23 young ladies have accumulated even more than their predecessors in scholarships. Some of these young ladies are with us this morning, and we want to congratulate all of you, and we expect great things from all of you young women. And, you know, to put just this accomplishment in perspective, in Watts, only 38% of kids are graduating from high school. So the work that the Ebony Guild is doing is so important and so valuable and clearly is having great results. These women of the Ebony Guild are offering an invaluable service to our African-American young women. You ladies should be proud of your 25 years of service to Los Angeles. And I will tell you, myself, and I know all of us in Los Angeles are very proud of the work that you are doing. So I'm honored to present the certificate to the Ebony Guild President, Laura Wilts. Dr. Wilts, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'd love for you to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
First, Laura.
Thank you very much for this recognition. I need to say that we started 25 years ago, 1981, as a group of friends who had young children and families of our own to raise, but who had a very strong commitment to the African-American female in the Los Angeles area. Joining with me today to my immediate right is Dr. Floraleen Stevens, one of the founders of Ebony Guild. Also charter members, now these are women who've been doing this for 25 years, are Shirley Miller, Esme Frazier, Phyllis Fields, and Judy Morgan Phillips. Also members here today are Beverly Mosley, Sylvia Carter, Darce Peters, and Leslie Ortiz. Accompanying our mentees is Yvonne Hutchinson, our liaison from King Drew High School. This last four years, we have mentored these young women, that is, from 2002 to now, giving them experiences to develop their self-esteem, self-confidence, learn to manage money wisely, learn test-taking skills, as well as writing skills. So we think they're pretty much prepared for their post-secondary education. Earlier, comments were made about the successes of some of the young people that were here. I am very proud to say that 15 of our 23 girls have GPAs over 3.0. 10 have GPAs of over 3.5. And five have GPAs of 4.1. Can you imagine? So again, thank you for this recognition. We pledge our continued support to the youth of the city of Los Angeles. Maybe not for another 25 years, but there will be those that will replace us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I must go in the back and put you. Come with me.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and congratulations. Our last presentation is from the 4th Council District. Mr. Weston, did you have something? Oh, no, Mr. Weston has another one. Why don't we go with Mr. Weston first? We've got all these soccer balls out here, and then we'll have Mr. Lavange back clean up. Mr. Weston. Mr. Parks, would you like to make an acknowledgement while we're waiting?
Thank you. While we're waiting, I'd like to make an acknowledge, very special acknowledgement. First of all, to welcome Sandra Howell back to Los Angeles. She was our chief deputy in the 8th District when I came in office. She's left the city of L.A. and now is working in Tennessee. She has three young people here with us today, Tiffany, Anthony, and Alexis. And they're here as part of a program called YCAT, which is the Youth Civic Action Team. And they've here in Los Angeles to take some time with their counterparts in Clean and Green, which is a civic duty in which they're gonna learn from the city of L.A. on how they can go through the process of the kinds of activities of L.A. Conservation Corps and our Clean and Green. I just want to acknowledge them here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and welcome to our visitors. Mr. Weston?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. As I'm being joined by my distinguished colleague representing the 4th District, you can see that he's in uniform, and I just want to say that even though I think this is a nifty t-shirt, and I will wear it, it doesn't go with my outfit today.
All right, all right.
You know, it's hard to believe that there, there's a sporting event that's bigger than the Super Bowl, a sporting event that's bigger than the World Series, but there is, and it's called the World Cup, and it's started today. And I'm proud to be joined today by the Los Angeles Korean-American World Cup Cheer Event Foundation. And let me just basically say to you what they hope to do. Four years ago, many of us remember that the Korean team made it to the semifinals, and the whole city of Los Angeles was abuzz. And these, the games were projected on buildings by these projections so that individuals could watch these events free. This organization, the individuals that stand with Mr. Lavange and I today are going to make sure that we do the same type of thing this year. And there are gonna be two locations where individuals can come and watch this, these World Cup matches for free. And one would be at the 3,700 block of Wilshire Boulevard, and the other one will be at Irola between James Woods and Olympic Boulevard. And I would say that it would be phenomenal for us if we could have the United States team and the Korea team in the finals, even though there are Brazil and others that would think that that would be wishful thinking, but no, we're positive here. I want to acknowledge that one of my dear friends is here, Alexander Kang, right over here. Put your hand up. Wait here, I'm gonna put you over here so you can be on television. And we're gonna ask, after Lavange speaks, we're gonna ask Michael Park to come up and say a few words. Mr. Lavange.
Thank you very much. Kamsamida, Mr. Weston. And this is great, community activity with the World Cup started today in Germany and throughout the world, the eyes are focused on this great athletic event. And what's so exciting about Los Angeles is people will be able to enjoy it in a spirited way. So we wish everybody well. I'm proud of my red jersey, and I hope success for the Korean team, as well as the United States team and all teams. It's a great to have a great athletic event. And Mr. Garcetti, because you're so skilled, would you kick the ball here?
Mr. Park?
Yeah. Okay, thank you for Councilmen Rabon and Weston so much, you know. And I'm very glad to see you, Councilman Greg Smith and Dennis Zine here. And I can say only, you know, we can make Los Angeles City more exciting and more friendship and more cheer up. And, you know, we make one each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And every, every council member was presented with a t-shirt and a soccer ball, and so too our Korean brothers and sisters, I say, "Te danhi kamsamida."
And Mr. Zine would like to add his good wishes as well. Mr. Zine?
I'd like to, Mr. Lavange, I'd like to add late-breaking news that Germany 4, Costa Rica 2 in the first game. Latest score update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston and Mr. Lavange. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Lavange for final presentation of this Friday, and we will run through the agenda next, take public comment after that. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. President, members, on behalf of Councilwoman Jan Perry, it's my honor, and if you would all join with me, as you have in signing this great resolution, to give to George Racus, who's completing 31 years of public service. Good luck, ladies. As you know, George has been the general manager of the Convention Center here in Los Angeles and 19 years has been providing service... Los Angeles and 19 years has been providing service to the city of Los Angeles. He's played a key role in helping make Los Angeles a world-class city, a level of service for a world-class facility. And just last night, the American Institute of Architects, which had a wonderful event, which our mayor received an award, which Jan Perry received an award and some others received an award. I remarked with some of the architects that what they loved about the convention hall is the light and the George Pi-designed ignition to the Convention Center, the warm feeling of that building. And to hear it from those is a credit to you, George, and others who work there at the Convention Center to make it a welcoming, warm place. He has served this city well. In 1999, then mayor Riordan appointed George to the position of general manager of the Convention Center. Before that, he worked as a deputy executive for the New York City Jacob Javits Convention Center and previously in New Orleans at their Convention Center in Louisiana. Mr. Racus has done an outstanding job and he has made this facility, a much better facility, which is so important when they take the challenge of the job than it was before. So, by adopting this resolution, by naming Jan Perry and Mayor Vera Gossett, all council members, George Racus, we salute you for your 31 years of service to the city of Los Angeles and wish you well in your retirement. Congratulations.
Mr. Cardenas would like to add his good wishes. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you for those kind words.
Hold on one second. Mr. Cardenas wanted to add his good wishes and then Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas.
I just wanted to add my appreciation for the work that you've done. Our facility has had its challenges, but under your leadership, we've actually been able to make the best of it. And the way it stands today, we are poised to continue to grow faster than we have for the last decade. It's unfortunate that the way society recognizes people, probably your predecessor will go ahead, the person who replaces you, will go ahead and get all the recognition for all the hard work and diligent efforts you put to put the scaffolding of success there. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you ahead of time for what you've done for this city and the fact that we are growing and we're going to continue to grow and the best is yet to come from the fruit of your labor. So, I just wanted to thank you personally for that and that means a lot to us in Los Angeles, but more importantly, it means a whole lot to the fact that we are going to have more visitors in this city to be able to appreciate how wonderful a city we are because of your wonderful work. And there's going to be a lot more jobs. It's going to be better for the economy and I just wanted to thank you personally for all your hard work. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
George, I want to thank you. Anytime I've needed assistance, you've been there with your able-bodied staff from the Convention Center. You've done a great job with it. Retirement is a wonderful opportunity to enjoy and as downtown gets revitalized, so much more activity taking place, you've laid that groundwork. It's going to be well-received by the people. So, a lot of work has been stated that you have done, other people are going to take credit for. So, you'll be commended for your dedication, 31 years of service to the people of Los Angeles and all that wonderful work at the Convention Center. Many, many events there have been sellout. You can't find a place to park. You've always arranged for my parking. I also appreciate that. So, thank you for all you've done for the people of Los Angeles, George.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. George, I just wanted to say thank you. I have to say at the budget hearings, you've been very candid upfront and a pleasure to work with in the sense of not only coming forth with issues that are relevant in the budget, but also taking a citywide view of just how important that Convention Center is. I hate to see you leave before there's a Convention Center hotel because that has been what you've worked so hard to come about and bring to the city. The whole issue of convention business is going to flourish. We've seen the hole they've dug down by the Staples Center. We also know it's going to grow in the sense of activities in the city of LA and other hotels will benefit. But to be able to look in the future and realize that our number-one industry is tourism, that we're actually going to be able to accommodate some of the larger conventions in the world should be part of your legacy and we really appreciate it and it's been a pleasure working with you in the Budget Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Please.
Thank you very much for those kind words, council members. I just want to let you know that my work at the Convention Center over the past 19 years has been both rewarding, both professionally, it's been interesting and also very challenging. But the most gratifying aspect of being at the Convention Center is the fine men and women who have dedicated themselves to the event industry and putting on a first-class event and representing Los Angeles so well throughout the world. It really is a first-class facility, but it's really primarily because of the work that the men and women do there on a day-in-and-day-out basis. For that, I'm very gratified to have been a part of such a great team over these last 19 years. Thank you very much and good luck to all of you for your future endeavors.
Thank you, George. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Thank you, George, and best wishes to you as well. We now will run through the agenda. We've already called the roll, so Madam Clarice, first items, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, that will be unanimously approved. Next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Reyes seconds. If there's no objection, that too will be unanimously approved.
And before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request from Mr. Cardenas to continue item number eight for 30 days and the new date would be July 11th.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item number eight until July 11th? If not, that will be continued. Next items?
First items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearings, items 1 and 2. They are both ordinances. One is an ordinance of formation and the other is a street lighting district ordinance.
Okay. I do not see any cards on that, so we'll open the public hearings. Anybody wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Send one fourth with, please. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 3, 2, through 21. Item 3 is the commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please, let's hold that on the desk.
Okay. And on item number 6, the committee report has been submitted and there is an amending motion that has been also submitted and distributed on item number 6. And item number 16, committee report has also been submitted.
Mr. Parks?
We have a special on 6.
Okay. Mr. Parks, number 6. Any other specials, colleagues? All right. So, the motion is required on 16?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move the report that's been submitted then. Is there a second for that? Anybody just, Ms. Gruel seconds? And any other specials? Okay. Let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 22 through 46. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Do not have any public speaker cards on those. If anybody wishes to be heard on those, seeing none, we'll open and close the public hearing. Colleagues, would anybody like to call any of those special? We have 22 through 46. Going once? Going twice? All right. Let's prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
That would be complete the agenda. Do you wish to go back to confirmation of the commissioner?
Let's take item 3 and then we'll take public comment after that. Ms. Zine? Okay. If we can ask Ms. Kay to come up and I will call on our chair of the, please come to the table, if you will, Chair of the Planning Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to welcome Sabrina Kay to the council. I want to thank her for coming to committee. This is her second round as an appointee and I wanted to thank her for her diligence, her patience. And in committee, we asked, what did we learn in the first round that you can bring to the second round? And just share a few thoughts with us, Ms. Kay, if you may?
Sure. Sabrina Kay, I am a resident of Councilman Weston's district in 10. I started at the bottom of the barrel, knowing nothing about city planning. And when I was appointed, I promised that I will give my best to learn the process, learn all the zoning code, and learn floor area ratios, and I accomplished that. But more than anything else, what was really important for me is being able to share the vision of the mayor and each councilman who have really given your heart and passion to each of your district. My meetings with each councilman and also hearing about the planning issues from the staff was really overwhelming. I think this is the first time in the history of Los Angeles that mayor with a vision and passion to make the city that really works, that's beautiful, that's walkable, that people are friendly. As a Korean-American immigrant who came here when I was 19, did not speak a word of English, this is really a privilege to be able to speak in English and be able to contribute as a part of Los Angeles.
And thank you, Ms. Kay. It is very important to draw that connection between the experience of the individual, the community, and as diverse as the city is, to have that insight as we build up an international city, a city of the future. And for that, I thank you for your hard work, your discipline, and your insight. With that, I'd like to encourage an aye vote to have Ms. Kay join the planning commission.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weezer to be followed by Ms. Gruel. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you and congratulations for your reappointment. And thank you not only for the time and energy you give to the planning commission, but I understand you're involved in a number of philanthropic organizations. And so, I want to commend you for that. It's something that's great to all we see, Angelinos involved in their communities and making sure we continue to improve the lives of all Angelinos to move forward. I want to thank you for that as well. And just to mention one brief issue that I know will be coming up to the planning commission sometime soon and give you my quick thoughts. And, you know, there's hearings that are going to be held soon about the conversions of industrially-zoned property over to residential. I'm concerned that if we put a blanket policy across the city of Los Angeles, it's going to affect areas in my district such as the Arch District, the downtown area that we're really seeing a renaissance. And I've been contacted by some that have gone, there's a chilling effect even talking about this because some people who are willing to invest in areas that have been neglected for such a long time on buildings that have been sitting as warehouses for decades, now that's slowing down. And so, I hope as we continue this conversation that we look at it geographically, a policy that slows down the conversions from industrial policy to industrially-zoned property to residential makes sense in some areas, you want to preserve the jobs there. There's an argument that it's not going to take away tax base, but you know, residential unit is going to bring just as much tax base, I think, in some instances. It makes sense in some areas, but certainly I don't see that making sense in some of the downtown areas. Just want to put that out there. It's something that's very important to me and I hope you consider those thoughts as you review it in your commission. Congratulations again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. If I can make just a quick comment on that, industrial land use is very dear to my heart as a business background and also being in the fashion industry and the education, that has been very dear to my heart. We just finished the Phase 1 of a research of downtown Hollywood and West LA area of what land, industrial land, the city really owns. And then we're going into the Phase 2 of the general plan of how we're going to convert to those land. And there are three options. One is leaving the industrial land as is, as an industrial land. If it makes sense for us to keep that as industrial land, we want to keep our manufacturing jobs. Councilman Cardenas had presentation this morning. It is very important that Los Angeles stays competitive as an industrial and manufacturing city as well as other areas of improvement. The second option is converted completely to residential. But the third option, which I'm very interested in, is RAS zone. That's our new zoning code and that is a mixed use and that really coincides with the mayor's smart growth and what Councilman Weiss have discussed on his Century City Plan and Councilman Labange, you know, makes photographs of these beautiful cities and the convergence and the transformations. And I think we really have an opportunity to change these industrial land into something that matches the vision of Los Angeles in the future.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I stand in support of Ms. Kay's reappointment. And I appreciated kind of your honesty about that there was a steep learning curve because all of us actually have had that steep learning curve and our constituents, neighbor councils are having that learning curve. And so, I think it helps that you bring that perspective of what other people are challenged with to see how we balance some of the rules and regulations we have to abide by that may be state law, what we'd like to see locally, how to bring consensus with individuals who are still learning part of the process. And I was interested in your comments on the RAS zone because we had a lot of high hopes for that, but we haven't seen as many as we would like to, partially because of the discretionary aspect of it. And so, one of the challenges, I'd like to ask you and your colleagues on the commission is to see some of those proposals that we thought would be incentives for people to go in the direction of really linkages between transportation and housing that we're not seeing based on some of the rules and regulations that went through that are challenging us to be effective. I know we all talk about transportation corridors and what's where we should build and I don't think there's still an agreement out there about where building will take place. And I know the planning commission will have before them a number of those kind of public policy issues, so we look forward to that dialogue. I think this is probably one of the most dynamic planning commissions I've ever seen in the city of Los Angeles and your expertise in the position you come from. I think, as you said, a businesswoman and someone who understands kind of the business side is helpful in that effort. One last issue I just want to bring up and see if any comments. Mr. Weston and Mr. Reyes have been holding three public hearings that I think on average had 200 people attend, some 300 in my district regarding condo conversions and how we balance the need of the owners of those property with the renters, many of which who have lived there for decades, to address the issue of preserving that affordable housing and where we can look at incentives and maybe even some disincentives to them going out of the business there of providing the kinds of affordable housing that we think is necessary. So, again, I just thank you for your perspective in this year and your reappointment, which came up so quickly, but I know you were fulfilling a kind of a vacant term. So, congratulations and again, support, Mr. Reyes and the mayor's reappointment of you on the planning commission.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Affordable housing issues have been a very important, broader policy issue for the city planning commission. I personally serve on the Wine Guard Center, which is a homeless shelter in downtown. And it is very important for us to negotiate with the developers how the affordable housing is really incorporated into each project, but also at the same time, we do not want to penalize any of the developments because of the affordable housing issue. And affordable housing versus reasonable housing, those are very important issues for planners to really look at because when we emphasize too much on the affordable housing issues, really the gap between affordable housing and reasonable housing becomes larger and larger. So, I will take your comments to my heart and take the comments to the planning commission as well.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have three council members on the queue, starting with Mr. Weston and then Mr. Rosendahl and then Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, thank you for acknowledging me and I promise that I will be brief, but it's always a pleasure to have individuals appointed or reappointed from the district that I represent. So, Ms. Kay, again, we rewelcome you to this city family. But more importantly, I think that what you bring is some institutional knowledge and experience. You may have had a learning curve to adjust to earlier on, but it's obvious to me that you definitely know your stuff and my guess is that you will be a stabilizing force on the commission. So, I mean, we are excited to have you and to have you again. And as Ms. Gruel said, there are some very challenging issues that face us and we're going to depend on your skill and your knowledge to help us do the right thing. So, again, we rewelcome you and I'm excited about serving with you.
Thank you, Mr. Weston.
Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Labange and Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
When you said that you had a long, you know, learning curve, I'm in my learning curve. I've been around 11 and a half months, but I've got some really big issues in my district and I'm not happy at all with the planning commission, the department, or anything else. But we have new leadership in both areas, so I'm hopeful for the future. My problem is in the 11th district where people think it's where the rich people live, well, 50% of my constituents are renters, 50%. Every one of them are threatened by profits of high-end condos that these properties are zoned for. All a developer has to do is say, I'm getting out of the rental business, exercise the Ellis Act, and within a year, wipe out the people, either bulldoze the buildings or do something else and turn it into high-end condos. It can't continue because everybody talks about building affordable housing. I have a- I have affordable housing that I'm losing. Lincoln Place is the most symbolic one, where we're down to 47 residents, all seniors and disabled, that will hit the street. Amco gave us 90 more days, which is terrific. It allows us to work out hopefully a relocation opportunity or work on some deal that maybe they can stay. We're in the middle of all of that. But every day I am losing constituents from affordable housing. If you look at that chart, it's my district far beyond all the rest of the city, and in many cases, all the rest of the city combined. Everybody talks about the future. The present in my district is the future if we can preserve affordable housing. So I got to tell you, my challenge to you is to help us keep rentals in the 11th district. Everybody has a right to be near the ocean, everybody has a right to have clean air, and it shouldn't be profits over people. So I look forward to your leadership in helping us in the 11th district preserve and protect the affordable housing that we have. Any comments on that?
Mr. Rosendahl, you have the blessing and curse of the beautiful California coastline.
Yeah.
So District 11 has been a big challenge for us. A lot of projects have come before us, and your staff have done a great job working with us to make the project more viable. However, the economy has been really driven to the end, that it's been a big challenge to really keep the affordable housing in District 11. What I would really love to do is have a good dialogue with your staff and come up with more of a broader policy issues and more of a guideline so we can make a communication to the development community of what we expect for affordable housing and what we expect for our constituents' rights to live in District 11 without making every single property being converted. And every time there's a project coming in before us from District 11, we expect 100 people showing up, and we would like to avoid that as much as possible as well.
Yeah, and I look forward to that collaboration with my staff. It is very critical. It really is incensing me to see that nobody seems outside of our city to care about the fact that my people are being thrown out, and it's not right. Everybody has a right for the ocean. And what we as policymakers, it's our responsibility to see that we get the proper mix. It isn't about a certain percentage being affordable going forward for me, it's about preserving what I have. So I appreciate your comment, and I look forward to our collaborative efforts.
I would like to take the responsibility to take this project back to City Planning Commission and contact your staff so that your staff is invited, being on our agenda, to discuss the matters that you have presented.
Great, and Gail Goldberg, by the way, is fantastic.
Absolutely.
I'm very honored and thrilled. She came to my Empowerment Congress, she and Gloria Jeff, transportation and planning, are joined at the hip, and I like the momentum that the mayor has now created as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Zine and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kay, congratulations on this pending appointment. Thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles. Mansionization, do you have your feelings on mansionization, or you've been following that?
Yes and no. I, as a businessperson, it's difficult for me to penalize the people who have a right to have bigger properties and so forth. But what's really important for me to see is a development and how the city will make the plan. For example, on the LA River Project, in Korea, when I was growing up, there's a Chang'e River. We used to tell children who misbehave, we're going to throw you out in Chang'e River, and that's their biggest fear growing up. Now the biggest houses and the most expensive houses are near Chang'e River. What I would like to see is the balance of what we can do.
Scale, so to speak.
Sure. And the density issues and the floor area ratios. So as long as planners really stick to what we believe in, what the vision is, and what the future of Los Angeles ought to look like, and we stick to that policy issue, and we have a good direction of where we are going, I don't feel that we need to penalize people who have a right to do and deserve what they do.
But should that right be reviewed to look at what is proper? That's what I...
Absolutely.
Seven members of council, second motion, or six members, second motion, to which calls for the Planning Department to study the issue of mansionization. And Commissioner, I can't tell you how many people came up to me, honked at me, yelled at me when I was walking down Largemont Boulevard saying, that's the way to go. It's an issue because they don't want to see overbuilding of properties.
I completely agree, and I think appropriateness is very, very important. And every single project that has come before us, what I personally have requested to the development community is to build a model of the area so we can see what the area looks like, and if it's completely out of the scale, we do not like that project.
Right.
Because it is out of the character. Again, it's not, we're not just approving project by project, we're approving communities. We're building the communities. We like to go with a vision of that each community and what that community ought to look like.
Thank you, Commissioner Kay. The city of Los Angeles is a city of great neighborhoods, and it'll only remain great if Planning Commission, Planning staff give good guidance to have appropriate development scale to communities, et cetera. I call for an I-vote when we all vote, and thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Thank you. I'm going to do that I-vote, but I have a couple of comments before I do that I-vote. You're currently a commissioner, so you understand the challenges.
Yes.
And the issues.
Yes.
I represent the San Fernando Valley.
Yes.
A community where we have some large parcels of land, where people like to have their animals, where people like to have the rustic rural environment, and there's developers that want to remove that. Mr. Rosendahl has a concern about affordable housing. We have a concern in the San Fernando Valley about affordable housing. Also, that quality of life where we can have the condos, the apartments, the single-family residents, and our single-family stock is being eliminated. I had to go to SC Hospital last night for a meeting, and along the 5 freeway, a number of apartments being built. We're packing so many people in, the transportation system is gridlocked. Do you folks, when you're considering going into a community and changing the zoning, bringing in multiple dwellings, do you consider the traffic impact and all the other factors that oftentimes negatively impact the quality of life?
Yes. We have always requested environmental reports and the traffic reports, and we look at communities, again, not just the project alone, and what that impact of that community is, and the mitigation circumstances of how each project affects the area. I think valley is a very interesting development. There have been a lot of development going on in the valley, and each project comes in a big, big scale to us. So we take each project very carefully, and we have been familiarizing with the area, and we have also the planning staff who work very hard, more of a formalizing the environmental report process.
And while you review reports produced by staff and you review the architectural plans, do the commissioners ever, because I know we've got commissioners from different parts of the city, do they ever get together and tour different parts of the city? For example, wherever you live, do you tour the valley, or San Pedro, or the west side, or the east side, or do you, you live within a boundary, I'm sure, and then your family activities are within a boundary, do you venture out as commissioners into some of these other areas, or you just rely on staff and the reports?
We're a new commission. We have been together for about six months now, and that is definitely in our plan. We have a plan to do the walking tour with Mr. Garcetti, and if you are inviting us to come to the valley, we're happy to do that. Our commission, members of the commission have been very, very friendly with each other. Because of a Brown Act, we don't get together very often outside of the commission, but when we are invited, we have visited different council members separately, and we are more than happy to go and take tours. I personally have visited a few of the projects myself before, just to understand what the project looks like, and I know other commissioners have done that as well.
Well, I will give you that open invitation to the Third Council District.
Thank you.
Where I'd be more than happy to set some time where we can gather the commissioners together and show them some of the concerns we have and some of the variety of housing developments. Warner Center in particular, we've put a lid on because it's exploding with the population of condos and apartments with no infrastructure supported, where the industrial is going to be removed, we won't have any industrial there. So I give you that invitation, we can get together and set that up for the commission, and that tour, I think, will really enlighten them, because I know when I go to other council districts, I'm enlightened to what they have to deal with every single day, because normally we're within our boundaries and we live and we work in that, but when you see that global picture as commissioners need to when you're making your recommendations, the different focus. So we will set that up with you and the other commissioners, it'll be our pleasure to do that.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Zine, if I can make a recommendation, fourth Thursday, our commission meets in the valley.
Okay.
If we can make an arrangement around 3 o'clock at one of the projects that's dear to your heart, that exemplifies the concerns you have, I am sure all of our commissioners will be delighted to join that project.
We will set that up, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Kay, I, you brought up an issue, a topic that is very important to me, which is industrial study area. In Chinatown, I have a goal line station, I have a 32-acre park, I have about three or four major residential projects emerging. I have what's called Need Housing, which is a Housing Authority site of about over 200-something units. And sandwiched in all this are underused industrial sites adjacent to the Alley River. Our study essentially overlaps that area. I understand there's a study going on, but I want to make sure my office, just for the record, is informed of every step that's being analyzed. As Chair of Planning Land Use and Management, I have deep concerns as to the process, and I want to ask you this bluntly. When is the council office, staff, and/or member being informed of the proposed changes when it comes to our districts? At what point is that going to occur? Because I have been told that there are certain planning staff that are saying, this is a mayor-commission thing, this does not involve the council, which I think is the wrong approach because we should be working as a team. And so I want to make sure that there is this dialogue and understanding so that we don't get into places and levels of disconnect that causes more tension than is necessary.
I completely agree. And as far as industrial land use, that I am working on the Subcommittee of Industrial Land Use, and I've been working with the staff, so I can take a personal responsibility to make sure that your staff is informed. Also, at the same time, we are in the process of updating our website. And our website, we plan to put all of the policy issues and the broader issues, especially industrial land use and what's going on in each step, because right now we just finished the Phase Two of Hollywood area, and we're working on downtown and West LA.
Well, I want to be at the ground floor when it comes to Chinatown. I want to understand what's being looked at, what are the parameters? I want to know who on the planning staff is making recommendations. I want to know who on the planning staff is going to be taking the steps to evolve this policy. I know Director Goldberg is a fantastic person.
Right.
But then again, she cannot micromanage every single employee's move.
Sure.
So I respect her greatly, and I look forward to working with her, but I also know that sometimes planning staff has a tendency to overlook the council, especially some of these steps that are important to me, not only as a council member, but also as the Chair of Planning Land Use and Management. So I look forward to working with you.
Would you like me to make a recommendation for City Planning Commission staff who is in charge of the industrial land use to contact your staff?
Please.
To be included in the discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I have a laundry list now. I wish I brought my pen and paper to write the notes, but as soon as I go back, I will make sure that I make notes and deliver what I promised today.
I think it's a credit to your eloquence, your ability to drill down to the issues in such a short time. It's a compliment to you, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a little footnote, when you mentioned that now the Planning Commission is looking at West LA in terms of the industrial use, obviously, we want to be heavily involved in it.
Sure.
Because frankly, I'm more attracted to taking some of that industrial property and flipping it to housing rather than flipping existing housing to condos, you see. And in my district, if there were more people there, maybe there'd be less gridlock coming from the South Bay and other places, and people could actually live in the district. So my attitude is much different than where I think we want to go about this industrial property. So therefore, every bit of discussion you have about the 11th district and our small amount of industrial land, we want to be involved in.
I think that is an excellent idea. We have an opportunity to create affordable housing in West Los Angeles.
That's right.
With the land that is given to the city, and the very little land that is left. And I think that is really a great vision, and if we can reduce the traffic going west on 10 freeway, I'm all for it.
You know, we're even a step further with the Expo Line. I'm told that as it lips into my district, there is a light industrial area by it that I'm putting housing where the potential stop would be, so we can actually plan our mass transit stops with housing development. So I look forward to going over those industrial areas with you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, for this great discussion. I think that is our last speaker. If we can open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
We can return to public comment now. Now it's time for public comment on items that are under our jurisdiction but are not agendized today. I'd like to ask, I'd like to thank everybody for their patience. First of all, Nicolas Rodriguez, Jose Nicolas, Lucia Delgado, Andrea Rodriguez, Elisa Avina, Maria Avina, Alberto Tlatoa will be our first, Josefina Medina will be our first speakers with South Central Farms.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Andrea Rodriguez.
My name is Andrea Rodriguez.
Vengo a pedirles, nos ayuden a salvar.
I'm coming to you so you can help us to save.
La Alameda 41.
Alameda and 41st.
And les pido a todos los concejales.
I'm asking all council members.
Nos ayuden.
To help us.
To save. Ese lugar.
That place.
Tan hermoso para todos.
So beautiful for everyone.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Good morning, everybody. Buenos dias a todos. Por no sé cuantas veces seguimos viniendo a pedir ayuda a ustedes.
We came so many times to ask for your help.
Quería leerles algo que hay veces quiero decirles y...
I wanted to read something to you sometimes. I wanted to tell you, but I don't have enough time.
Tenemos tres años pidiéndoles.
We have been asking you for three years.
Que reconozcan el error que hicieron al...
So you can get the mistakes you made.
Al vender el pulmón verde.
You sold the green land.
En la 41 y Alameda.
At 41st and Alameda.
Ustedes se rehusan.
You are refusing.
No han hecho nada.
And you haven't made anything about it.
Quiero informarles hoy.
So I want to inform you.
Que Julia Butterfly Hill.
That Julia Butterfly Hill.
Acaba de cumplir 23 días de ayuno.
Has been fasting for 23 days.
Esta mujer está arriesgando su vida.
This lady is risking her life.
Porque ve lo justo de nuestra causa.
Because she does see the fairness of our actions.
Ustedes del otro lado no tienen la integridad de admitir que estafaron.
But you don't want to admit.
A la comunidad de Los Angeles.
You made a mistake in Los Angeles community.
Al vender 14 acres.
Selling 14 acres.
De pulmón verde.
Of the green land.
A menos de la mitad de su valor.
To less than half of the price.
Y lamentablemente.
Unfortunately.
No, no se apena por haberlo hecho.
You are not sorry for doing that.
Aunque los residentes pobres del distrito nueve sufren tantas enfermedades pulmonares.
Residents for District Nine has many illness.
Su representante tiene... Su representante tiene, él, no tiene la, la capacidad de.
The representative has not the ability.
De tratar de salvar este lugar.
To try to save this location.
Pero esto no nos debe sorprender.
But we are not surprised.
Pues es, pues está las órdenes de los ricos.
Because it's under these rich orders.
Y nosotros no somos ricos.
And we are not wealthy.
Y nos ha querido comprar e intimidar, pero no lo hará.
You wanted to intimidate us, but it's not going to be possible.
La actitud de este cuerpo ha dividido la ciudad.
The attitude of this body has divided the city.
Escuchen bien, en particular ustedes que tienen español.
That you understand Spanish.
Sus acciones han dividido.
Your actions have divided.
La ciudad.
The city.
Esperamos que no nos ataquen para desalojarnos.
We hope not to be attacked, to ever.
Ni que se enferme gravemente la señora Hill.
And we don't want Ms. Hill to get sick.
Porque si esto sucede.
Because if this will happen.
Ustedes serán los culpables, porque en sus manos está.
You will be responsible.
Ayudarnos.
Because it's in your hands to help them.
Gracias.
Y si alguien lo ofendi con mis palabras.
And if I offended someone.
Solo entiendan.
Just understand.
Que soy un campesino más frustrado.
A farmer, and I am frustrated. Gracias.
Thank you.
A woman had just completed 24 days of hunger strike in support of the retention of the South Central Farm. Think about that. As we meet today in this comfortable chambers, a woman is risking her health to bring attention to what appears to be the imminent destruction of the South Central Farm. By now, you all know that the eastern portion of District Nine suffers some of the worst air quality in the city. The residents of this underrepresented area suffer an adorably high rate of respiratory diseases. So I suppose that Julia Butterfly Hill putting her life at risk is no different from the children and the seniors who live in this part of the city. The difference is, though, that the accelerated pace in which she is facing her death, and the fact that they have no choice but to breathe the filthy air. Many of us outside City Council, City Hall, ask ourselves if this matters to any of you. After all, most of you, most of you in this council followed the advice of our developer, of developer-friendly city attorney Rocky DeGaddio, and sold the city-owned land that is public land to Ralph Horwitz for less than its market value. This leads to the birth of the South Central Farmers, and the exposure of your sweetheart deal for the world to see. I just had to point out that this issue and the stubbornness of this council, and its hard-boiled tactics employed by the representative of the council District Nine towards our leaders must be known. I want everybody who watches this channel to be aware that this intrasurgence is leading, is leading to the polarization of our city, and we don't really expect much from you, but we will not forget your silence that borders your arrogance. Once again, we present ourselves to ask for your support. We've been here for three years, and you know that we have proven our determination to you by coming here for three consecutive years and pushing for this issue to be resolved. We want immediate action to be taken upon. Like my fellow campesina said, when the victim goes through, if somebody gets hurt, the responsibility will go to you, because you, you will be held responsible for not taking actions and trying to save the largest urban farm in the nation. Y aquí estamos, y no nos vamos.
Thank you. Anybody else from the South Central Farmers? Not, um, Danny, Dr. Danny Weisman will be our next speaker. You have two minutes. Welcome, Dr. Weisman.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure to see all you ladies and gentlemen again. I'm here to speak about the 9/12 Commission, the Commission to Review the Neighborhood Councils. As you know, the clock is ticking almost as fast as your clock ticks on me, Mr. Garcetti. And we are going to have a commission in place and in operation within the space of one month. Uh, Mr. Zine, have you made your announcement public yet? Mr. Zine? Yeah, well, thanks. Uh, if not, I'll make it. I'm very pleased to hear that Mr. Zine has appointed Lynn Schaefer to be his appointee to the commission. Again, I commend Mr. Rosendahl for appointing Mr. Tom Ponton. Uh, that assures, I think, nine people will be from neighborhood councils on this commission. It's going to be very important for this commission to be thorough, to be well-represented by neighborhood councils. We're looking for the, now that we've had the father of the neighborhood councils on the city council, the mother, I guess, yes, there's the mother of the neighborhood councils over there. We're looking to see what she will appoint and what each of you will appoint, uh, in order to make a well-rounded, a very concerned group of people who will review the city charter as it relates to neighborhood councils. As you well know, because you see it happening all the time, these neighborhood councils are the best and the most important new development in democracy in this century, and probably in the last century. The ability to bring more people into city government is crucial to the improvement of the government at all levels and in all ways, and I'm hoping to see that this commission will give you advice to make a better charter, to make a better city, to make a better set of neighborhood councils. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Weisman.
Within time.
Thank you. We'll put it in the bank. We appreciate it. Michael Hunt is our next speaker, uh, to be followed by Matt Dowd, and then we'll go out to the Valley.
Folks, I'm back on the record. Um, it's, it's a good thing now, um, I'm, I'm a good cop this week. Um, here's the problem. We got jobs, we got discrimination, we got people that's not working that, who had really great jobs, and a lack of interest in our neighborhoods and things like that. Uh, we got a 4215 is unconstitutional on its face bill. Um, we got the community that's really unhappy with the, the whole, the whole community structure. Um, here's the time to rebuild like they did in South Central, right af, right after the riots and things like that. I, I got to be a great part of that plan, working with the Sheriff Department for eight years, uh, reconstructing the neighborhoods in South Central LA. And you know what's so funny about it? I even got to work with Benard Parks at that time. I was head of Black Peace Officers Association in their mentor program, teaching the kids how to read. Well, when I first met Herb Weston, I was putting the first black judge-elect in Inglewood, Kevin Ross. Um, and, and I got to meet him when he was running for 48th, uh, Assembly. Um, one of the credits, too, putting the black people back to work with the television, um, quicing and foaming. I got way farther than he got with all the presidents of all the big networks and, and everything. Um, it's really time to listen and reconstruct our neighborhoods to where our neighborhoods are working for us and with the community. Um, it's, it's time to put the people back to work, it's time to suspend the ordinance, it's time to stop violating people's First Amendment rights, it's time to do a great job in the community. I'm a good cop this week. Listen to what I'm saying, you guys, I'm a good cop. Let's correct the problem. I, I say no more. Next week, it might not be like this. I'm trying to correct the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
My name's Matt Dowd. I'm from Venice Beach. Um, you can look me up online, mattdowd.com. I'm actually a musician, primarily a songwriter, guitarist. I'm also an artist. I was an internationally recognized sports photographer. Tiger Woods has my pictures in his home. I did that for five years in Australia. Um, it's not like I'm, uh, just a nobody off the beach, um, but the point I want to make is that I came here because of this guy. I brought him in here today. The South Central Farm probably wished that, you know, some of these guys were sitting up in their trees, but we're losing it. Um, this invokes, if, if it doesn't invoke something in you, then you're in the wrong country, but there is a message there, and I'd challenge everyone here to open the roll and have a vote, and tell me, is it legal to sell this on Venice Beach today or not? I mean, that's, I, and, and we got people down there who aren't trained in the Constitution, not trained in anything, they're making that call. I mean, I don't know exactly. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I heard Bill, I heard you say some good things today, you know, like, people before profits. I think there's a lot to that. We finally get to the point, we come to a place at Venice where you got to stop this, you know, the, really, the commercial vending is the condos. That's commercial vending, you know? Um, so, the, you know, and, and you said you were incensed. That's a nice choice of words, too. I'll, I'll take the play on that, because I have my own incense flavor. It's one particular flavor, and I have a message that I want to get out to my consumers when they walk down the boardwalk. You might have children or grandchildren who develop an art or a craft, they might want a place where they can just go out and try it out on the passing thousands.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
That's what that's for. You can check out your product, get public opinion.
Thank you for your comments today.
You might not be in a position to take a shop. You know, a lot of people are in that low-income bracket.
Our next speaker is Bruce Darian out in the San Fernando Valley. Uh, Mr. Darian, we can hear you. Why don't you go ahead and begin your testimony? Thank you for your patience.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Council, uh, City Council. My name is Bruce Darian. I'm here once again to talk about the Malibu Pier, the corruption, how it's affecting the city. When I ran for mayor of the city of Los Angeles last year, I was appalled to see that I was blocked in many ways from conducting my campaign, particularly the televised debates that went on with the five members that, uh, were a part of those debates. After one of the debates that went at the temple downtown or on the west side, I asked Mr. Villarosa what he thought about the Malibu Pier scam, and he replied, "I don't know anything about it." And within three seconds, his aide right behind him said, "Good luck trying to clean up that mess." I wrote Mr. Tony Cardenas, Mr. Bob Hertzberg, and several other people over the Malibu scam. It certainly involves the city of Los Angeles. And I'd also like to point out, just the other day in getting signatures for a petition that's going to Congress for a grand jury investigation, this senior was appalled to find out that his son, who works for a heating and air conditioning contractor that's part of the new high school that's being built downtown, witnessed, and may be, very well be a whistleblower like myself, several 10-ton air conditioning units being dumped into the dumpster. Somebody made the call that they were no longer good. He himself knew they were not checked, they were brand-new, they were sitting there for a short time, and it was determined that they should be thrown in the garbage. This is just one example of the fraud and waste that's going on with city government, state, and federal government. Additionally, I talked to a person from the Department of Parks and Recreation over Memorial Weekend, and he explained to me that there's rampant fraud in state government, and that he himself is bound by a contract not to be able to say anything to the press.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darian.
This was before the Supreme Court decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our apologies as well. The video link was down today in Van Nuys. We will make sure that our Information Technology Agency addresses that, and we will get that fixed. Um, so in case you see it this evening and wonder where, where you are, we were able to hear you today, but unfortunately not see you, so our apologies again. Um, that closes our general public comment for today. Um, if we can go to the special two first, I know a council member, uh, needs to depart, so if we can, uh, take number two and if, special number two, colleagues, and, uh, Mr. City Attorney, if you will speak to the findings, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 6th, 2006, Ronnie Hardy was murdered in front of his residence. Immediate action is required to issue the reward offer in order to apprehend the suspect and to protect the health and safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to government co-section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. Let's open the roll on the finding, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is before us, uh, because of our Rule 23. Mr. Weston, did you want to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Uh, a few days ago, I indicated that one of the constituents, one of my constituents was, was killed. His name was Ronnie Hardy. He's a, was a lawyer, and he was at home on June 5th preparing to go to court, and he, at about a quarter to 12, needed to go outside to get something from his car. And at, at that point in time, he was shot in the back of the head. So what I, you know, you, you, you know, you don't have the ability to articulate, uh, how the family feels or how saddened we are for them. The only thing that we can do is everything within our power to try to ensure that this individual is brought to justice. So today, I'd like to offer a reward, in the sum of $50,000, for his apprehension and, uh, conviction. So I would like to ask for an "aye" vote from all of my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Let's send that forthwith. Uh, we have a special meeting and special one, but we're going to return to the regular meeting right now, or, sorry, we're in the regular meeting, but we're going to return to the, um, items that are there. Um, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Uh, next item called special was item number six, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Okay. Mr. Parks, we have item number six before us now.
Yeah, thank you very much. Can I have, uh, CAO come up, please, and the CLA and the staff? Colleagues, I thought we'd, we'd have, this is the year-end report, and there's a number of adjustments made, but also what's important to know, there's a number of pending issues that may impact this '07, '06, '07 budget somewhere down the line, and I'd ask the CAO to walk through some of those issues, the important highlights, but also equally important, the issues that could be of concern that deals with, uh, our revenue side. Let's start with that.
Good morning. This is Laura Guglamo with the City Administrative Officer. The year-end financial status report, um, identifies various budgetary adjustments in various city departments totaling, um, over $70 million. We provide, um, $15 million to address immediate needs in several departments. There was an error in the report in that we, um, neglected to include a $3.5 million transfer from the Human Resources Department, um, Workers' Compensation Account, which needs to go to the Unappropriated Balance Reserve for Economic Concerns to address the appropriations included in the report. We've identified departments that can, that have shortfalls. Those departments include the Department of General Services, the Police Department, Opebalo, the Treasurer, and the Convention Center, as well as departments that have, um, surpluses. We wanted to point out that there are several departments, um, that are doing better than they were in our mid-year. That includes the Cultural Affairs Department and Environmental Affairs. The report also includes funding for various pro, capital projects. Those include the East Valley Refuge Repair Facility, the Public Works Building, Street Services Capital Improvement Projects, the Sycamore Avenue Bulkhead Project, the Hollywood Municipal Building, the Nate Holden Performing Arts Center, a medical services facility, and the police headquarters project. Our five-year forecast does not differ from what was submitted as part of the budget deliberations. Our reserve fund balance is projected to be $401, $411 million on June 30th, and I think Bill's going to discuss that a little bit further, as well as our revenue issues. Mr. Fuchioke?
If I can speak to a couple of issues on our report, specifically on page 12 of our report, we identify some areas of concern. First, with respect to our general fund revenue, we identified a shortfall of approximately $35 million for our May, um, property tax receipts. We felt it was attributed to, uh, an accounting change by the county's Auditor Controller's Office. Um, subsequent to the preparation of our report, we sent a letter to the Auditor Controller, County Auditor Controller, expressing our concern, and in fact, we heard from them today, acknowledging that it was an accounting problem. We will be made whole probably in the, um, by the month of August for that $35 million, so that is no longer a problem. But our larger issue is that, and we sent some information to you, and we've also sent information out to the employee union, unions, and I'm going to get to that shortly, but we sent information regarding a recent IRS decision to discontinue the application of the federal excise tax on, um, long-distance services. That is a very, very significant issue for the city. We have the mayor convening a Communications Tax Equity Task Force that's working on the, developing actions to address this. If we take no action, and we, I mean collectively, because this will impact every single city in, in California, it should also, it will also impact cities throughout the United States. If nothing is done, we. throughout the United States. If nothing is done, we can lose up to $170 million from our utility users' tax. So it's something we need to put on, on, we've talked about it before in some of our reports, we need to focus on this. We will have a report to the mayor and council within the next two weeks with specific actions that we need to take. I was contacted by the original author of our utility users' tax as it relates to telephones, and that was former consummate and also former supervisor Ed Edelman. And he's working with the city of Santa Monica now because they may lose $8 million. That pales in comparison to the $170 that we could lose. But Ed has talked to me and offered his services to address this. But this needs to be addressed on a statewide, if not nationwide, basis. But, but it's a huge issue. What I wanted to raise is that, and I'm going to, Ray's going to pass something out, and it's information from the budget, and it speaks to the reserve fund. You're going to hear one particular union that we haven't settled with yet state that we have $411 million sitting in our reserve fund. And that issue came up earlier that said we had close to half a billion dollars sitting in our reserve fund, and that should be available for employee raises. What we're passing out, and what I've highlighted, is the fact that, yes, it shows that, that we had a cash balance of $411, but once you account for what's been transferred to the budget and already programmed into the budget, it leaves us with a cash balance of $167 million. That's approximately about four, 4.1% of our overall general fund budget. Now, a 4% reserve fund is, is, is close, is a good reserve fund, and is closer to what, to our 5% target. But I would, I would remind you that when it comes to other cities, probably like mid-sized cities in the state of California, they, they reach the 10% level, the 12, the 15% level. 4% level is excellent for our city. 5% is even better. But it, it's, as you, as you can, as you, as you know, 4%, if we have one major incident, and the incident could be if we lost our utility users' tax for telephone carriers, that's 170. We would have a very, very significant problem. But we are, we are, we're watching that very closely right now. As I stated, we'll have a report for you with some recommended actions within the next couple of weeks.
Bill, would you also comment on the issue, although we discussed it in Budget and Finance, that the prospects as we move forward, if things go as, with caution, where we might end up in 2010 as it relates to the structural deficit?
What we have in the report, towards the end of the report, is our, is our five-year forecast. And the five-year forecast, although it looks good, and it speaks to actually a surplus at that particular time, I'd caution you because the five-year forecast is, you know, we use that as a tool, but it doesn't include the unexpected, such as if we, if we use this, if we lose our telephone tax. I also forgot to mention to you what's happening at the statewide level, and we know that, that one member of the Assembly has pushed a measure through the Assembly to create a statewide franchise fee process for cable users. While they're trying to present it, they being the State Assembly, as something that's positive and will encourage growth, we could lose another $5 to $9 million if that measure goes forward and is implemented and, you know, to the detriment of the local city. But I just caution you that this report also doesn't reflect cost of living increases for civilian classes, and we'll be negotiating their contracts in the spring of 2007. So there are issues that, that are here. You know, things come up on a, every single year, whether it's our capital program, the surprise that we've had with petroleum. This year alone, we had to spend an additional $9 million to, to keep our fleet moving. So it's something that although we can see a light at the end of the tunnel, that's always subject to change. We need to be, continue with our current prudent financial practices.
Also, colleagues, I think what's important, as you go through the financial status report, you'll see a number of departments, excuse me, that have gone through the year where the CAOs work with them to get their budgets in line. And one of them is Cultural Affairs, and also working with the issue of Environmental Affairs.
Environmental Affairs.
But also dealing with some departments that have struggled, including Convention Centers for some of the paybacks. And so you'll see that there's been a lot of progress made. And as we've talked about, the issue of the structural deficit, it's not just a matter of how the, what accounting for, but it's how we spend our money, making sure that the structural deficit isn't added to by hiring and, and personnel people so that we then continue to add to it. The one thing I'd like to bring your attention to is the Amendment 6A. And the reason for this amendment, and we're going to take you back a little history, is that the first part of it deals with the $3.5 million issue which Bill talked about earlier. But one of the things that we have struggled with as a, as a committee over the last three years is the overtime with LAPD. And last year at this time, when we closed out the budget, we actually expended about $8 million, and a motion came forward, and I believe it was done by Ms. Misakowski, that said, "We will spend this money, but give us a game plan of how we don't end up in this situation during this fiscal year." Well, this fiscal year, we ended up with about $8 million of non-refundable overtime spent, which we're attempting to fill the hole. Part of it was filled by about 2-point-something million, just under $3 million, from the department's own resources. The last paragraph of this motion reflects an intent that the 5.3 remaining, we have some options. We could either take it out of our reserve fund, which lowers it, which reduces our ability to get to the 5.1, or we can go out and reallocate money from other departments. The committee did not want to do either one. And so the game plan was that we added language, the second to the last paragraph directs the CAO to come back with a report. That report will be inclusive of the last paragraph that will give us options. And so this is merely putting in place what we'll vote on later. It's not an issue in which we're saying today that immediately that this will be taken out of the budget, but we expect that the CAO, working with the Police Department, is going to tell us how not only they're going to resolve the budgeted issue for next year, but how within their own accounts, they're going to deal with this shortfall this year. We felt that that was the fairest way to deal with it. And again, if our mission is moving forward to get out of the structural deficit and also have a reasonable reserve fund, there is no way that we can continue year after year finding 6 to 8 million for one department's budget when they have gone over with all the forewarnings that we've given them in the, in the council committee. In fact, during the council meetings, the department was $5 million over in, in overtime. Just from that point to this date, they raised another $3 million. So they jumped from 3 to 8 million in a matter of months. If we don't put some controls on it, we're going to end up with two issues. One, the reserve fund, or reallocating money that belongs to other services. So that's the intent of the amendment, to solve the 3.5 million, but also to begin to continue putting controls on what we think is an over, a runaway overtime, and in some instances, salary account of one department.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge is our next speaker. Mr. Labonge?
Mr. CAO, in that report, how many, or Madam CAO, how many, Madam CLA, how many people have been over, overtime, or whatever they account? You mentioned that like Environmental Affairs and, and Cultural Affairs were good, but I don't know how much dollar that is compared to others.
Attachment 5 and attachment 6 to the report itemize by department how they've done by, over the course of the year. Attachment 5 identifies those departments that are ending the year in with a surplus, and attachment 6 identifies those departments that, that are ending the year with a proposed deficit, and it indicates where those surpluses and deficits are.
Right. So mention a few for me, and hold my time, please.
What consummate Parks mentioned is that, I think it's, it's, everyone knows in the past, we've, we've identified some problems with Cultural Affairs and their ability or inability to manage particularly the as-needed account. What's important is to recognize that Cultural Affairs has made some very significant improvements in that area. And so where we're somewhat quick to identify problems in a department, we wanted to be equally quick in identifying an effort by a department, in this instance, Cultural Affairs, and also Environmental Affairs, and then to manage, manage their resources, manage the financial resources.
And this special, or this amended A?
That speaks to the Police Department and the concern.
Right. We're, we're going to do number two first before we do number three?
First, we're going to, I think, just in general, you're asking us to, to report back on this particular issue. And a report back will include which, what has caused the, the overtime, because some of it, you know, just to be, to be fair, the recent immigration demonstrations were something the department couldn't plan for, and yet resulted in a significant expenditure of overtime. But we'll be addressing the drivers of what's contributed.
See, I don't want to, Mr. Parks, I don't want to, like, that's an exact issue. The floods, the fires, the very significant expression of people's First Amendment's right, and the demonstration caused extra to the police. Are we loaning that to them? Is that what your intent is, or is that?
What the consummate wants, which I think is reasonable, is a separate report back that identifies the overtime that has been spent in the department, what it's been spent for, and then also how we can control some of those expenditures that, more of the planned expenditures, not the unexpected. The immigration demonstrations, they happen, we have to, we have to have staff for them.
Fires?
I understand, but the report will lay that out.
Okay. But is this, are we approving a loan? Is this number three? What do we do with number three? Because I'd like to amend it to say to wait till the report comes in.
Well, today, they need the money to make payroll. That's the bottom line. We have to give the department the money to ensure that the, the officers in the department are properly paid.
Right.
So as a consequence, rather than just transfer the money because of the concerns expressed by the consummate, it's being characterized as a loan. And once we come back with our report, you can decide.
But, but, but here's the problem I have, Mr. Parks, is in, in number two year, you talk about reimburse the reverse, revert, reserve fund for unbudgeted but controllable sworn overtime. I mean, you haven't done the report yet. What is controllable? I don't know what's controllable when there's a fire, a demonstration, a flood, and the police, you know.
I think the issue is, Tom, we said that the item, the last paragraph is included in the first paragraph. Nothing will happen until they come back with the report. So we're saying what the intent of the committee came out of, but nothing will happen as far as, other than moving money, 5.3 million, to pay the payroll.
Right.
That's what we're doing today. But before we move any farther, in 30 days, we'll end up with a report that will analyze whether it was fire, flood, or just misuse, or if not misuse.
Not misuse, it could be managed better. I hope it's not misuse. The Ethics Commissioner should look into that.
But no, these are things that we're asking for. But again, it was the intent of the committee that this be a loan if there is no justification for it.
I think it's a ten, as a council member representing the city of Los Angeles, that if our Police Department has overtime, and I'm sure there was overtime expended on the tragedy early this week with the shooting of the police officer, I'm sure there's overtime expended on situations throughout the city all the time. I, I want to see that we manage all our departments correctly, but I want them to be free that they should maybe, well, we shouldn't have overtime because maybe we're going to get our, our tails whipped by the city council because we expended too much. I would love to see a report, and I understand the Police Department looks at this every pay period. And I just, as a philosophy, Mr. Parks, I would like to not say it's a loan, to say to a department it's a loan. If there's a problem, a mismanagement of funding, then we have to look at it that way. But I think this is a call to service when the police work after there are a lot of time that they're associated to do. And plus, the requirement of court, which is, how much is court time? And that's my last question, Mr. President. How much of it is court time, do we know?
That's, that would be part of the report.
Well, I think we should really know that, too, because I just think. Thank you, Mr. President, members.
Ms. Grul is our next speaker, then. Mr. Weiss? Ms. Grul?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And I, I think the point that Mr. Labonge brought up is something that all of the council members are struggling with, because I think there is a recognition that overtime is necessary and appropriate, and there are reasons for overtime. But on the other hand, with no disrespect to the LAPD, we also don't want to give a blank check to say they can do whatever they want, even though they're LAPD, and, and again, we'd like to see more officers on the street every single day. I don't know, I kind of heard something that you said, Mr. Parks, in response to Mr. Labonge, that may be some language that might make people feel comfortable in this, which would say something the council intends unless, you know, other circumstance identified, some way that says that report that is above will have an impact on that next item, and the intention that says those items, that will be discussed before any action is taken place, but that we're asking the department to come back and demonstrate, you know, so some, some way to, to, as someone said to me here, light, light the fire, and at the same point, understand some of the nuances that may be occurring in this most recent important overtime. So I don't know if there is some language, Mr. Fujioke, you would recommend that would meet that same need, both Mr. Parks and the rest of the committee and council.
As part of this motion?
As part of that motion and that item, the section that I therefore moved the intends to, if there's language including that, that would, you know, meet people halfway.
I think that'd be best, the print, from my understanding of the motion.
Hold my time, please.
And the, well, our focus would be, is to report back. And to report back and speak to your concern. The, I think, once we, we provide the detail that shows how this money was spent, what it was spent for, whether it was court overtime, or, or the unexpected, the unplanned events like the immigration demonstrations, then we can lay it out and show you what could be controlled. And of course, the unexpected cannot be controlled. We couldn't, no one could plan for these very, very large demonstrations. They just, they happened, and no one knew they'd be, it'd be so, so big. So, you know, it's, it's our intent to, to lay out this entire issue in our report back.
So is that, do you have a recommendation? I know some of my colleagues may, may have as well, but a recommendation on that, again, to alleviate people's immediate reaction on that I further move where it says intends us to be alone, allowing some flexibility there in responding to what concerns have been raised by my colleagues, that if demonstrated that in fact, there was a reason for these overtime and so forth. So you?
I have a suggestion on just the language.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll stop talking now. I may come back, but if, I think you know the intent of where we're trying to go to, and I know LAPD does as well.
I apologize to interrupt, but I, I just, listening to the three of you, what if, what if that paragraph simply said in essence that I further move that the CAO shall report to the council on the advisability of treating the funding shortfall for unbudgeted overtime amount of 5.3 million as a loan, and the advisability of requiring it to be repaid in full? What about if you just give the CAO the opportunity to report on the advisability and the policy pros and cons of doing that? Because that's, in a sense, Mr. Fujioke is saying he just wants to report on it. In a sense, Mr. Parks is saying he wants to report on it. Mr. Labonge is saying he wants to see the report before he decides, before he states his intent, and before he states whether it must be repaid in full. So I ask for the CAO to report on the advisability of the actions delineated there.
I don't disagree with you. I think the intent was the committee's intent. If the council wants to put advise, you know, advisory, that's something that could be amended. But all we want is not to end up where we are today, because last year, we had a paragraph very similar to the second from the bottom that said, "Do better and tell us how you're going to do better," and the reward was 8.3 million in the hole. And so we're saying this time, do better, but come back and tell us, in the sense of the last paragraph, how we deal with that shortfall. Because if we follow the report as it's written without this amendment, then we're basically saying, take 5.3 million out of the reserve or find it from other allocated resources. And so we're saying, let's move it and fix their payroll, but let's come back with a report.
So then what if the, on this paragraph, because all we're talking about is the third moving paragraph, what if the, we have a first sentence of that moving paragraph that expresses the council's concerns along the lines that Mr. Parks has articulated, and expresses them as concerns. them as concerns rather than a specific intent, and then has a second sentence that asks for the CAO and whoever else to report on the advisability of the actions that you put in the third paragraph. That way, you've got the concern expressed, you have their report, but you accommodate Mr. Labonge's concern about not stating his intent or our intent and requiring that loans be repaid prior to getting the information.
I don't have a concern about the issue of the advisability, or we could say at the last, the second to the last sentence of the last paragraph, unless determined to be unavoidable through the above requested report by the CAO. Whatever way we want to give the CAO the ability to respond, that's what we want. But we don't want to lose the issue of this 5.3 million. One of the options is to have them find it within their resources, and we did not want it to go and do it verbally. We want that report to be able to be dealt with and address all of these circumstances.
Right, I think, I think, I think there's agreement on getting it.
We want the report to include the last item.
Yeah, having us speak to the appropriateness or advisability, or however you want to characterize it, is fine, because that's, that's our intent. Because we will say, we will identify what was, could not be avoided, and what could be the result of managing this resource better. So that's fine.
That's what the intent is. The intent of the intent is they have the CAO.
I, I, I second Mr. Labonge's motion to whatever Mr. Fujioke said was fine.
Okay.
Mr. Labonge?
And I don't know if you can answer the question. There's 19 areas in the areas of service for the Police Department. And is the overtime pretty consistent, general overtime? Are you looking at these things?
The Police Department doesn't provide us that level of detail on a regular basis.
The Police Department doesn't provide.
There was a previous report that was developed by Police Department, mainly or the CLA, that showed variances in the use of overtime throughout the 19 divisions. Our report will include that information.
I think it's real important to have that. If this is Johnson Trucking, and they got 19 divisions, you'd want to see that there's consistency or know that maybe at some region of that company, that they have a lot of overtime due to one or the thing. Is it consistent? I think that's very important to look at that. Are you going to get that type of information?
One of the things that was discussed in the committee by.
Is there a comstat to their budget as there is to the crime?
There's a comstat element to the, I wanted to volunteer this, there's a comstat element to the deployment of resources as a consequence of use of overtime. So if, in high crime areas, where the chief or where the department wants to address that area, there's a tendency to use overtime because of the lack of resources. They don't have the staff, they don't have the officers. So they'll take officers in overtime and put them in that specific area. So you'll see an increase in the expenditure of overtime for that area, and that doesn't happen throughout the whole city, and rightfully so, because you don't have the same crime levels throughout the whole city.
Or the same services, the key service to the people of Los Angeles. What is the amount of overtime that we budget? Correct me from my memory, overall, in their fiscal year?
1.2 million hours.
1.2, how much dollars?
1.2 million hours. The dollar amount is.
54, 56 million.
56 million. So this is an additional 6 million? Is that correct?
They over expended by 8.3 million dollars, or 8.?
Excuse me, if I can just interrupt you for one moment. Colleagues, I just want folks to know we're at 10 basic quorum. Please, nobody leave, in order to maintain that quorum. We have one item, a special item after this, and two items in our special meeting. Mr. Labonge, I'm sorry, or please continue.
They over expended by a little more than 8 million dollars. However, they found internal savings to address all but 5.3 million dollars of that.
And is there, is there a way you think they can find additional internal savings or anything of this nature here?
Not in the current year.
Not in the current year?
They need this money to meet payroll.
Right, okay.
That's just the bottom line.
Okay, well, I, I can understand that, and I do appreciate, Mr. Parks, all your work on putting a harness on city government, and I say that in an appropriate way. As a general manager, the past, you know how the city works and operate, and discipline is very important. But I think discipline in this particular service is tough for me to say it's just a loan, because I don't know how they'd do without that in the next fiscal year. I'm trying to find a way to get all this information so we could see technically where there's a problem, but then at that time, come back and let this council have a very full discussion, should it be a loan. Let that discussion take that place. But at this time, I wouldn't want to put it, you know, the question before you get the answer, and the answer's going to come from the CAO's study. And I hope the Police Department fully cooperates you, with you in all divisions, including the specialized divisions, so that you know that. I just have trouble doing that now.
And council member, the Police Department has asked for additional hours in their budget. Part of this analysis can look at whether or not some additional appropriation on a permanent basis is warranted.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. We have Ms. Hahn for the first time, and Mr. Parks for a third time.
Thank you, and, you know, I think if you're listening to all this, and again, I certainly am on the side of always, you know, being responsible and not giving any city department a blank check, I do also have a problem, because at this time, I don't have enough information in front of me to say it is my intent that this be a loan and needs to be paid back. So that's the problem I have with this. And I will tell you, you know, we, we stand very firm on the city council, our neighborhoods stand very firm on, the mayor stands very firm on our priorities, public safety. That is something that we all have argued for, we've fought for, we all have different ways of trying to figure out how to get more cops on the street, but so far, you know, that has not happened. And I know, in my district, I need a lot more police officers on the streets. And it's just not my feeling at this point that it has been abused, or that in any way I have information in front of me that says this should be a loan. And I also feel a little bit, it feels a little bit punitive. And if this is going to be our policy moving forward, that we make it very clear to the Police Department that in fact, if they overspend, or if they, you know, really abuse overtime, then in fact, you know, if we have to pay it, but we expect it to be paid back, I can see us doing that next year, next fiscal year. But I feel that we're doing this without having had that dialogue with the Police Department, having had laid out specific rules. If you, you know, overspend here, you know, we'll help you out, but we consider, we're going to make sure that you pay us back. I don't feel like we've made that policy on the city council, I don't feel like we've made that policy as a city of Los Angeles. So I would really like to just, you know, strike that last part, that we intend to consider it a loan. I think we need the report back, and then maybe answer me, why is it that we're losing this ability, as Councilman Parks said, if we don't say that today? Do we lose that ability after we get the report back to then say, "We expect this to be paid back"? Is there a sense that today, unless we say that today, that this is one of our options, we would like it to, the feasibility of having this be a loan and paid back? Do we lose that option today if we just ask for the report back on a breakdown of how overtime dollars were expended?
The concern you're expressing is, is consistent with the concern expressed by Councilman Weiss, and as a consequence, the revised language that he's, he's offered that we said is fine, because we'll speak to the appropriateness or advisability, or whether or not it should be paid back. That would be part of our report. It doesn't have to say, "Pay it back right now."
Okay, so we don't have to say that today?
We don't have to say that right now.
Yeah.
We'll speak to that in our report.
Councilman Parks, I really, because it is not my intent, and if this language remains, then I'm not, I won't be able to vote for this, because it is not my intent today, because I don't have the information in front of me.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the language that Mr. Weiss offered gives us an ability to get this question answered. We asked that be put in there so it could be part of the report. The other issue is, Ms. Hahn, so you're aware, this is not a first-time discussion, this has been discussed for two and a half years in budget with the department, we've gone through painstaking step after step. Ms. Sikowsky wrote a motion very similar to the second to the last paragraph that said, "Do better," and the reward was 8.3 million over. This is $24 million in three years on, on the overtime and salary accounts of this one department. And so we have done this, we sat through budget, we told the chief when he came in very specifically, "If you come to us with an overage in June, as you've done the last two years, our intent will be that we will advance the money from your next year's budget." Because at that time, it was over 5 million, because we had to give, I forget the figure then, was in almost double-digit millions that we brought the budget up to date. We also put extra money in because they have reimbursable overtime, we didn't want them to be punished because they were working at the airport. So all these things have gone to pass. So the final analysis is, is that we said that clearly on this budget, no mystery, that we're going to look at this, and that's why we put the language, because initially, the motion did not have that. And we said, no, we want that as an option to be come back in the report. So Mr. Weiss said the advisability, so if people have a concern about their intent being expressed, that report was expressing the intent of the committee, we can put the word advisability and all that other, but we don't want to lose that option of that being studied as part of the report.
Okay, that's our final speaker. We have a, I think, friendly amendment to the, to 6A. Maria, would you give us the, excuse me, Madam Clerk? Would you please give us the language?
It's the CAO to report to the council on the advisability of treating the funding shortfall as a loan.
Okay. Nobody else wants to be heard? Let's quickly open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Okay, next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one that was presented by Councilmember Parks.
Send that previous one forth with, number six, if there's no objection.
Seconded by Councilmember Gruel, and that the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the MTA has requested that the city provide immediate interim traffic control measures at 52nd Street between 10th and 11th avenues, due to the MTA's recent decision to move a bus stop to that location from the 5200 block of South Crenshaw Boulevard, which had been the site of a recent gang-related shooting. Immediate action is required to instruct DOT to establish a temporary no-parking zone at the new bus stop location. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
If nobody wishes to be heard on the findings, we'll open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's now before us, on the substance, anybody, Mr. Parks?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is something that has been a significant problem in the 8th District recently, in fact, as we mentioned in the first paragraph of the motion, we've had so many incidents on Crenshaw Boulevard, to the point that one of our major businesses, Crenshaw Ford, is actually thinking about closing down because their business is beginning to be used as a refuge. What we found is that the current bus stop on Crenshaw is pretty close to two schools, a continuation school on Crenshaw and also Crenshaw High School. The number of young people that lorder around those stops, and also those who are trying to get on the bus often end up in conflict, which then creates a, a number of negative issues on the street. We've met with the various police departments from the sheriffs because of the MTA, also the school police and LAPD, and the school district recently to try to find a solution. MTA has come up with a solution that they think in moving the bus stop, that it will separate some of these issues, and they want to do it as early as June the 12th. And so it is incumbent on the city family to move forward in assisting them to make this happen, and hope we can reduce the potential violence in the community and injuries to young people while they're trying to get to and from school.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Can please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, we'll send that forth with.
On six.
Absolutely. We have on six, and we'll send that one forth with, too. If we can go to the special meeting, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weisar, Labonge, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wissensheim, Garcetti, 10 members present, and of course, Mr. President.
Okay, first items?
There are two items on the agenda, and they're both items for which public hearings have not been held. One is a track map, one is a parcel map.
Okay. Do not see any cards. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to be heard on this? Seeing none, we will open and close the public hearings. Any council members wishing to call either of those special? If not, let's take the balance and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those two are approved. Go back to the regular meeting. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred?
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Tuesday, June 20th, to arrive at 11:30 for personal business, that meets council policy.
All right, Mr. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, June 16th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business, that meets council policy.
That excuse is granted as well?
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, June 21st, for city business, that meets council policy.
All right, she's excused as well.
And that clears the desk.
Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Do we have any announcements for this weekend? Mr. Labonge?
Just a real shout-out for Dave Brown, who's our camera operator here at Channel 35. He's having a birthday tomorrow, and I know he gets us a good shot in here, so we want to thank Dave for all the work and all the ITA that they do in broadcasting this council meeting. Happy birthday, Dave.
I have an announcement.
Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce the Wilmington family picnic tomorrow, starting at 12 noon in Banning Park. It's a great opportunity to have great food, family, friends, and I'll be there. And it's just a great time, beautiful day tomorrow for the families of Wilmington to celebrate their community.
Other announcements, Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Rosenthal?
We have several announcements for the 8th District for this weekend. June the 10th, 1:00 p.m. at Washington Mutual Bank, 4401 Crenshaw, there'll be an identity theft and credit theft seminar put on by Washington Mutual and the L.A. Neighborhood Housing Services. Also, there will be a community meeting sponsored by the Latino Coalition Against AIDS and the African-American Community Development Initiative at the L.A. Southwest College in the Lobe Theater Room, Saturday, June 10th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00. And the discussion will be dealing with AB 2383, which deals with HIV testing in prisons. Also, the issue of, on June the 10th, Saturday, at 8:00 a.m. to 1:00, at the 42nd Street Elementary School at 4231 Fourth Avenue, they will have their first annual Community Beautification Day. And then also, the American Cancer Society of Baldwin Hills Relay for Life will go on Saturday, June the 10th at 9:00 a.m., and through Sunday, June 11th at 9:00 a.m. at Rancho Cienega Park.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. We'll come back, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosenthal, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank the departments. We had our Green Roof Symposium yesterday. We had advocates there, we had folks from the, we've got the Green Book, and I want to thank Councilmember Garcetti for also doing introductions as the session started. And colleagues, this is really about how we look at our rooftops as a resource for greening, our thermal heating that's occurring in our environment, especially in the southwest of Los Angeles. So this is a policy that'll take time to evolve. We are looking at one city building, figuring out how much it'll cost, what are the technical issues, and maybe in the future, we can have an oasis on each rooftop that could be accessible for our seniors, for our kids, and it might just be a passive site in which we use nature as an air conditioner for our city and cooling our environment. So I want to thank the departments for not, again, being too cynical and actually pushing forward on these policies. Thank you so much.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Mr. President. Tomorrow, as Janice Hahn was talking about her picnic over there, we have one in Mar Vista from noon to 3:00 in front of Tom Ponton's house, and he is the historic founder and head of the Mar Vista Neighborhood Council, who's my appointee to the 912 Commission. So I'll be there, and we'll have hot dogs and hamburgers, and I invite the Mar Vista community to come to this street party. The block is all set up and festive, and we'll have a wonderful time.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. The Van Nuys Air Fest will be taking place this Sunday. You can start arriving at 9:00 a.m. It's free, and it's an event where you're going to have an opportunity to look at a lot of vintage aircraft and also some modern jets and things of that nature, and familiarize yourself with the largest general aviation airport in the world. This has been going on for many years, and this may be the last opportunity for you to enjoy this air fest, as the Van Nuys Airport is going to be reconfigured over the coming months. months. So again, this Sunday, the 11th of June, at Van Nuys Airport, the Van Nuys Air Fest will begin at 9:00 a.m. The best street to enter on is Balboa. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, colleagues? Any other announcements? Do we have any adjourned motions today, colleagues? Okay. If I can please ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourned Ms. Gruel?
Thank you. I'd like to...
Excuse me, Ms. Gruel. Can we have everybody stand, please? Ms. Gruel?
Adjourn in memory of Gail Baumann. Gail Baumann passed away this Tuesday, June 6th, after a seven-year battle with leukemia. Ms. Baumann is the mother of Eric Baumann, who is a constituent of mine, who is Chair of the L.A. County Democratic Party and Deputy Insurance Commissioner of California. I talked to him a few days ago, and he said his mother passed away on Tuesday, on Election Day, and so it was a bittersweet day for him, success in his candidate, but his mother passing away. And he said that, you know, they never expected her to survive the seven years, and that he is lucky to have had her for so long. Gail was a registered nurse whose loving care helped many in their moment of need. She was an outspoken advocate who, she obviously gave a little bit of her genes to her son, and will be missed by all of those who knew and loved her. Graveyard Services will be held today at 3:00 p.m. at the Mount Sinai Memorial Park in Hollywood Hills. She is survived by her son Eric and his partner, Michael Andrecheck, who live in North Hollywood, as I mentioned, in my district, and her sister, Ann. But I know we all send our good thoughts and wishes and condolences to Eric and his family.
All members, thank you. Mr. Parks, or did you want to add... Mr. Parks, then?
I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Beverly Lynette Taylor. She was the aunt of my executive assistant, Monika Robertson. She was born in Los Angeles in 1943 and passed away on June 6th, 2006. She worked for 27 and a half years with the Blue Cross Organization, the last six, working at the Huntington Hospital. Funeral service will be held Saturday, June 10th, at Mountain View Marchory in Altadena at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
I was just going to do the same thing that Wendy Gruel did, and you know, ironically, it was her 69th birthday on the 6th as well. And Eric and Michael have been in partnership for a long time, and his mother was a strong supporter of his basic civil rights, human rights, and, you know, for gay marriage as well, and she will be missed.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I know she's not here because she's at the AQMD meeting representing the city, but it was Councilmember Perry's birthday yesterday as well, so we wish her a very happy birthday. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.